Good evening, everyone. I called to order the virtual study session at the Lakewood City Council on December 1st, 2025 at 7:05 PM. And this is the Mayor Wendy Strom. I apologize that you are not seeing me tonight. It looks like we may just be on audio for my end of my side of the meeting. So I wanted to just let everybody know we are working through, I am working through some technological issues. But in the meantime, we will continue the meeting. To connect to our meeting tonight online, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any links to LakewoodSpeaks.org. That is our online forum for public comments. It will be left open tonight and until 10 AM tomorrow morning. If you'd like to leave comments on any of the items in tonight's presentation. Mr. Robb, will you please start us off by calling the role?
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Counselor is Black. Cruz Eye.
Here.
Cruz K.
Here.
Berman.
Here.
Labir.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Nice Strom.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sharzai.
Here.
And Sinks.
Here.
Great. Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
All right. Thank you so much.
Oh, Mayor, you're cutting out a little bit.
Mayor, I'm happy to support turning it over to Mr. Whitaker. There we go.
Are you back? Mayor Strom?
Yep.
We lost you for a second.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and hand the floor over to Mike Whitaker, Transportation Engineer, for an update and introduction introduction to our consultants as well. I'm going to stay here in the background and hopefully get this fixed while we are getting our presentation. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're starting off with Safe Streets for All. This was a grant we got several years ago. It's taken way too long to get to this point, but we actually are now getting some work done and some headway made. And so without further ado, I would like to turn it over to Kelly Dunn and the Consor consultants.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kelly Dunn, Transportation Engineering Supervisor in the Public Works Department and the Lakewood Project Manager for the Jefferson County Safe Streets for All Vision Zero Safety Action Plan. The update tonight on the Safety Action Plan will be presented by Christian Bereko with Consor Engineering, who is the consultant for the project. Myself and Mike will be available after the presentation for any questions, but for now I will hand it over to Christian.
Thank you, Kelly, and good evening, everyone. Thanks for the introduction. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with my presentation and we can jump in. Right. My name is Christian Bereko. I'm with Consor Engineers. We're providing consultant support to Jefferson County and Lakewood on the Vision Zero Safety Action Plan. I'm here this evening to present an update and an overview on the project and then also available to answer questions. So we'll jump right in and excited to share an update with you. And like Mike suggested, it's been a long time coming, but we've made great headway and we're excited to be with you this evening. I'll give a quick project overview. I know most of you are familiar with it, but it has been a little while. So just wanted to make sure that we provide a quick overview before getting into some of the details. Like Mike mentioned, this is funded through a Safe Streets and Roads for All grant program, which is a federal highway administration program. And the award was given to Jefferson County and Lakewood jointly in 2023 with the aim of looking at where traffic crashes are occurring, what kind of conditions might make them more likely or might be leading to these incidents, and also to develop a data-driven and also community input-driven plan for making our roads safer for everyone. We're working together with the cities of Edgewater, Golden, Wee Ridge, as well as the towns of Morrison, Mountain View and Lakeside to create this regional Vision Zero Safety Action Plan. Since that's a mouthful, we've been referring it to the VZ SAP or VSAP. So that we'll use that acronym moving forward, if that's all right. And then we're really undertaking this VSAP effort to focus on eliminating crashes that result in death or serious injury. So while all crashes are significant, we really want to make sure that we're using this grant funding to identify where crashes that result in either death or serious injury are happening or could happen based on some underlying risk factors, and then working to eliminate those crashes, so that that's working towards that vision zero concept. We're also looking at opportunities to make the roadway safer for everyone. So whether you're someone who walks, bikes, rides transit or drives, the plan is meant to sort of meet all needs. Though there's a particular emphasis being placed on vulnerable roadway users, which we define as bicyclists, pedestrians and motorcyclists. We're currently, we'll go through a quick overview of the project schedule in a moment, but we're currently in the data analysis phase. So we're reviewing a six-year crash history to identify trends and things like the most common crash types and most common crash locations. We're nearing the end of that portion of the analysis and soon moving into project development and prioritization. So we'll identify specific opportunities for reducing those severe crashes and also reducing the risk of those severe crashes happening moving forward. We drafting a safety action plan in 2026, and that's one of the touchpoints that we're excited to circle back with council on to provide an update. That action plan will not only include recommendations for improving safety outcomes, but also tracking performance and so identifying kind of how to look out over time and kind of assess whether the action plan is in fact making an impact or if things need to be adjusted or tweaked. And then with council's partnership, we'll be finalizing that plan and moving forward into implementation as part of the Safe Streets and Roads for All initiative. We'll be providing an implementation guidance plan. So things like identifying funding opportunities for moving ahead high priority projects and providing conceptual designs for certain initiatives. We do want to underscore that the two main focus areas for this regional VSAP are to address severe crashes, so crashes resulting in death or serious injury. And you'll hear me refer to those as KSI crashes moving forward. Those are really the main crash, the type of crashes that we're most concerned about and pay the most attention to. And then also crashes involving vulnerable roadway users. We recognize that while not all crashes can be prevented, there are proven engineering and program-based countermeasures for reducing the severity of crashes that do occur. And so by focusing on sort of these two specific groups, so the KSI crashes and then crashes involving vulnerable roadway users, we can address the highest needs. But those same countermeasures or recommendations can also broadly impact safety outcomes throughout the community. We've distilled three main goals for this planning effort. One is to advance transportation safety for all users. So that, like I mentioned, includes folks who walk or bike, use scooters, use mobility devices. The needs all users are being considered. We're also aiming to adhere to the federal highway safe system approach, which I will describe a little bit more in a moment. Essentially, the safe system uses many different layers of safety to prevent crashes and to make them less harmful when they do occur. And we're also developing transparent methods to measure progress over time to track implementation. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the Vision Zero concept, but as a quick refresher, Vision Zero is a transportation strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and serious injuries for people using all modes of transportation. A quick note on terminology as we move through the presentation. There's different different crash severity ratings that get recorded at the scene and then also during the post-crash follow-up evaluation. So when we refer to a fatal crash, we mean any crash that's resulted in one or more fatalities within 30 days of the incident. So if someone, for instance, left the scene in an ambulance and was transported to a hospital and then sustained life-threatening injuries, which later resulted in the fatality, we refer to that as a fatal crash. Serious injury crashes or any crashes resulting in an injury that renders the victim or the person incapable of performing activities they were capable of prior to the crash. Then there are non incapacitating crashes. So those are injuries that are sustained and potentially evident at the scene, but can be addressed with kind of minor medical attention and don't have any lasting effects. We also consider those what we sometimes call minor injury crashes, especially in locations where there are fewer overall crashes. So we want to kind of be more a little bit more comprehensive in the types of crashes or the types of severity that we evaluate. And then there are, of course, no injury crashes, or what we refer to as property damage only crashes. Apologies. And I think one thing that we really want to underscore throughout the presentation is that vision, vision zero, the vision zero principle recognizes that humans do make mistakes and that crashes, we don't want to, we don't want to say they're inevitable, but we can anticipate they will occur. Where there is some opportunity or significant opportunity to make an impact is to put in place countermeasures or policies, programs that can minimize the consequences of that human error. The safe system approach is based on five, it's a framework that's based on five sort of main tenants. It's evaluating the opportunities to provide safer conditions for all people traveling. So considering the need of all roadway users regardless of their travel mode, looking at safer vehicles, so the actual vehicle design and things that aspects of the vehicles, components that can make a crash survivable that otherwise would not have been. So you know, kind of classic examples are mandatory seat belts and airbags and things like that. Increasingly, we're seeing more and more safety features being required in vehicles like rear seat, seatbelt sensors, for example. Also, another, the third third component of the safe system approach are safer vehicle speeds. And this is the idea that if we're traveling at slower speeds or safer speeds, we can reduce crash severity. And then safer roads, so looking at the actual design of the roadway and evaluating opportunities to enhance the design with safety in mind or to prioritize safety over, for example, person throughput. And then the final aspect of the safe system is the concept of post-crash care. And this is grounded in the evidence that the sooner a crash victim who has been injured is able to get to the hospital or get to care, the better the outcome is going to be or the less severe the outcome is going to be. So a key part of the safe system approach is that when those crashes do occur, having a plan in place to respond very promptly can ultimately reduce crash severity. Taken together, the safe system approach is essentially what we like to call the Swiss cheese concept of redundancy. So with these multiple layers of a safe system, if one or more fail, the hope is that others will be able to kind of catch some of those crashes and prevent any kind of severe outcomes that may otherwise have occurred if the full system was not there. And now for the Jefferson County effort, the city of Lakewood, as you know, is a funding partner. Also, thanks to Kelly, Kelly's leadership, there's a great representation on the project management team. And then Lakewood staff are also working alongside Jefferson County staff to guide the effort. So it's a truly integral rental effort in that regard. We're, we're excited that the Lakewood community is going to benefit very specifically from the Vision Zero Safety Action Plan. A few, a few of the specific things that Lakewood residents can expect is, one is a dedicated Vision Zero Safety Action Plan for the Lakewood community. So while, while it's a regional effort, Lakewood will will have a sort of a standalone plan and we're doing kind of standalone analysis within Lakewood, which I can go into a bit more in a moment. We're identifying the quarters and intersections in Lakewood where severe crashes are occurring less frequently and doing a deep analysis on those to understand the underlying issues that might be contributing to those outcomes. And then we're also identifying locations in Lakewood where the risk of crashes occurring is going to be highest. And that can be due to a number of different factors like vehicle speeds, land uses, lighting conditions. So we're sort of evaluating what we call the risk factors that are present and determining locations where maybe there isn't a significant crash history today, but there could be one at some point in the future. And it's our opportunity to be proactive and get out ahead of that. In addition, the Lakewood specific plan is going to include a prioritized set of countermeasures or what, you know, would more commonly be referred to as recommendations for addressing the most critical safety issues within the city of Lakewood. And then this is an extensive effort. We're really closer to the beginning of it. We got kicked off over the summer and got well underway in September. Our first phase has been concentrated in both data analysis, but on a parallel track, we've been having our first phase of community engagement. I'll share an update on our community engagement efforts to date in a moment. But we have been out in the community, both in person and offering an online survey and interactive map that allows community members to give input. And we've, we've been able to engage residents from across the county, but in Lakewood specifically as well. Next, we'll be moving into project development and prioritization. So taking what we've learned from our crash history analysis and also from our community input and starting to develop a set of recommendations for advancing safety outcomes. And then through the spring, we'll also be working on not only, not only detailing out those recommendations, but also prioritizing them. And then in the spring and summer of 2026, we'll be developing the draft safety action plan. And that'll be done in conjunction with our second phase of community engagement, where we'll be going back out to the community to share our draft recommendations and findings and to confirm that we've heard community member concerns correctly and that we're reflecting some of the top safety concerns that community members have shared with us through that plan. And then finally, in the, in the fall into early 2027, we'll be finalizing the safety action. The safety action plan as well as um beginning uh to support um both Jefferson County and Lakewood on formulating an implementation plan. Uh for our community engagement, I first want to highlight some of the stakeholder level engagement um that we've been conducting, and then I'll also share some of the. Um general uh community engagement activities that will that have taken place. Um we have three main um stakeholder groups for the effort. The first is our core group, and this includes one representative from each partner agency. Um in in the case of Lakewood, Kelly serves as our core group representative. And the core group's been supporting the effort by helping our team formulate key components um of the of the Vision Zero Safety Action Plan. And by contributing insights um on local context. We also have a focus group, um this includes representatives from Lakewood and Jefferson County. And um these are individuals who help manage the transportation system, so we um for Lakewood, we have representation from both Public Works. And from the police department. And then finally, we have an advisory team, and this is um I guess what you might call our traditional or traditional stakeholder committee for the effort. Um this group is engaged on review of materials, um and they uh sort of bring the community lens to. To everything that that we work on to make sure that um community input i- is is guiding the process. The advisory team consists of representatives from public health agencies, uh Jeffco Public Schools, advocacy groups. And then neighboring jurisdictions that um touch Jefferson County, like Adams County and Littleton, um but aren't directly uh involved in the study. And then we've also invited regional agencies that support roadway safety initiatives like Dr. Cog. And then we're engaging the focus group and advisory team at some key milestones throughout the process, so. Um are w- we're doing an initial meeting with our advisory team, actually this week, um at the core group, we've been we've been meeting with consistently. Um uh on a bi-line fleet, bi-line fleet cadence since the the effort started. Um but the focus group and the advisory team are are engaged a little bit less often, so. Um the the first um full workshop style meeting with both the focus group and advisory team will be to review our crash history. Um so we're calling our existing conditions, and then also to um review our high injury network, which is. Um the the sort of subset of roadways and intersections where severe crashes are happening at the highest rates. Um we'll also be engaging um both groups when we develop our community-driven needs and best practices review. Um which is going to be um an effort to um identify the the. Locations within Jefferson County where um. Where community need might be highest, um the the um. This will be guided by what we're calling a nondiscriminatory plan. And um what the nondiscriminatory plan will seek to do is to to ensure that the um recommendations or. Uh improvements or changes that emerge from this the Vision Zero Action Plan. Um bring at least forty percent of the the intended benefits of the plan, so the safety benefits. To communities that are um underserved and and when we um. When we're sort of making that determination or or setting that um kind of making that uh determination of of which communities are underserved. We're taking into account um income, um also past safety uh history, so. So specific neighborhoods where um crashes are are located. Um and then also looking into things like um flooding impacts or any any other. Um issues that might drive uh roadway safety outcomes, so um that that's a um. Interesting uh initiative that both Jefferson County and Lak- and Lakewood are undertaking that um is a little bit. Um different from from some other Vision Zero Action Plans, and it's an interesting way of kind of looking at safety needs a little bit more holistically and broadly. Um our third touch point with the the stakeholders is going to be during project development prioritization, so getting. Um those groups to um review our initial recommendations and ensure that we're uh sort of meeting the the community's needs. And then finally, when we've drafted the um the action plan, uh working with the stakeholders to do a detailed review. Um and under and ensure that um that community needs are reflected in that document. We 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 are striving to make sure that this is a a truly community-driven effort. In terms of our engagement activities to date, um we've held um in-person events at three. Three different community events throughout the county this past fall. Um we had a presence at the Evergreen um Elks Elk and Arts Festival um in unincorporated Jefferson County in late September. Uh we jo- joined Lakewood community members at the Cider Days event in early October. And we also um attended the Gold and Autumn Fest, so tried to tried to meet with community members at a few different um community events that. Um that are popular and and well-attended. Um we we use these opportunities to inform the community about the planning effort as well as to promote our project survey. And um in addition, we're also hosting a virtual public meeting next week on December eleventh. We did get great um community input at Cider Days, we had about a hundred and eighty participants um stopping by our our booth over the two days. Um and we collected, we we had physical um maps and an example shown here. Um large, large format maps of both Lakewood and the um wider study area. And community members um stop by to to hear a little bit about the effort, but also to um give us some specific input about locations where. Um they may have experienced a crash or feel unsafe um traveling and and we're able to to kind of collect that input and and record it. Which um has been really helpful in um helping in inform our understanding of um. Of community concerns about traffic safety in in Lakewood. A quick snapshot from that particular event, uh forty-six percent of the participants gave um input that related to. Some sort of driving concern, so um locations where folks have experienced near misses or or where they've witnessed speeding as an issue. Um we heard from about twenty-five participants, uh twenty-five percent of the participants um shared some sort of walking-related issue. Um so either, you know, seeing folks uh running red lights. Um uh sharing locations where it doesn't feel comfortable to cross the street, those types of concerns. And then twenty-three percent of the participants um shared concerns relating to bicycling, so either um you know, missing. Or um uh bike infrastructure that that feels a little bit too narrow or doesn't feel sufficiently separated from vehicles. For the users, um maybe some concerns about general network connectivity and um leaving leaving folks with. You know, so some locations where in the city where it doesn't feel necessarily safe to cross the street and a bicycle, um the those types of concerns. Um w- we were able to to chat with a uh what felt like a very um representative cross-section of the community, though. Um we we did engage with a number of um older adults um as well as families. And um primarily um English-speaking um community members. Um our general sense, just based on the conversations, was that the majority of folks we interacted with were were Lakewood residents, but we didn't um collect specific. Uh residents uh information, so uh it's it's possible that we did um touch other kind of wider community members as well. And then our project survey is open until December nineteenth. To date, we have approximately a hundred and sixty survey responses, I say approximately because it's possible that some additional responses came in over the Thanksgiving holiday. Um and then we have an interactive map, we're showing an example, uh just uh screenshot here of what the map looks like. It allows users to um to drop pins um that are kind of coded to a specific transportation mode, so you'll see. There's um examples here shown for pins for pedestrians, bicyclists, um drivers, we also have ones for transit users and. Folks using mobility devices, um each pin for each pin, um folks are able to. Um share specific concerns, so that they'll place the pin on a location and then document the concern that they have. Um and then folks are also given the opportunity to to upvote or um say, you know, yes, I I agree with this, so that's. That's another great way for us to understood if to understand if there's a sort of consistent concern at a specific location. And um so far, to what we're seeing to date is that um con- concerns about. Um walking, driving, and then uh bicycling or or rolling are are fairly evenly split. We haven't heard um v- very many concerns specifically about riding transit, um and then other can encompass um. Uh concerns that don't neatly fit into any specific category, but um for the for the most part, we're we feel that we're. Hearing from folks who um who do have concerns about driving in Lakewood and and Jefferson County broadly, but also. Um we're hearing a lot of great input about locations where it doesn't feel safe to to walk or bike, so we're we're developing very comprehensive understanding. Um through this tool of of people's transportation safety concerns. And then looking at the data, um we're um examining crash history from two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty-four. Um since we're just into December, we um are not looking at any crash records from twenty twenty-five, given that. We don't have a complete year of data where um yet, and um generally speaking, it takes a number of months into. The following year to finalize um crash data, since some agencies um may be. Uh um facing a little bit of a backlog for reporting and things like that, so we we generally um try to stick to. Uh four years and years that um that we know are are sort of completed, so twenty twenty-four is our most most recent set of data available. Um generally speaking, Vision Zero efforts examine a five-year crash history. Um we did as a as a team decide that since we had the advantage of having twenty twenty-four data released um right around the time we started the effort. We wanted to to include um that year, so that way that way we could um. Control for twenty twenty, which which is just a bit of an outlier with COVID and and reduced traffic volumes. Um and that that most communities saw um the number of crashes go down that year, but that was. Not necessarily because things were safer, it was just fewer people on the roads. Um overall, um the number of crashes in Lakewood has varied uh year to year. But the number of KSI crashes, so um the the crashes resulting in death or serious injury, the the. Sort of top two portions of the um of each uh bar chart here. Um reflect that the the KSI um crashes are are relatively consistent year to year. Um in terms of their their number, and as you can see um on the map, they are concentrated. Um a- along some of the more major corridors, so US Six, um Colfax and Wadsworth are are the ones that jump out. Um although we are taking a a very close look at each of the uh crashes shown here, um since since they're the most severe crashes. For vulnerable roadway users, um the the um. And again, these are uh crashes that involve pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorcyclists. I think o- one thing to to know and the the main takeaway we we'd like to um truly share here is that. Um while uh vulnerable road user crashes account for a relatively small share of the overall crashes that are happening. They um they are disproportionately represented uh on when you look at KSI crashes, so for example, in twenty twenty-four. Vulnerable road user crashes, um so if you combined um crashes combined uh involving pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorcyclists. Those accounted for seven percent of all crashes in Lakewood last year, but sixty-one percent of KSI crashes, so. Um when, you know, folks riding a motorcycle or walking are involved in the crash, they're. Much more likely to um experience a severe outcome, and tha- and that's one of the reasons that. Um that the vulnerable cra- road user crashes are are a major focus of our effort. Um and then as you as you can see on the map, um while for KSI crashes, there there's concentration along. Certain corridors, um for vulnerable uh road users involve crashes, that there's certainly um higher. Higher numbers of of those crashes happening on corridors like Colfax Avenue, but ge- generally speaking, there's distribution throughout the city. So um that there's a, there's definitely a need to um examine the conditions through throughout the community to understand. What might what might be driving those outcomes. We've also evaluated um top crash types over those six years. Um when looking at all crashes, rear ends account for thirty-five percent um of of all crashes that happened over the last six years in in the city. Um but then when when you look at severe and fatal crashes, rear ends account for just eight percent. Whereas uh pedestrian involved crashes, um as an overall share of crashes are are very, very few. Um but they count for one in four uh KSI crashes, so w- while we're we're looking at the crash data really. Comprehensively and looking county-wide and and in Lakewood citywide, we are um we are looking at the KSI crashes with a different lens. Because um some of the uh the outcomes are really different and the causes are different as well. Um and then we we also under- recognize that um local local roadways um are are really important to residents. Especially with the uh new local roadway speed limit. Um w- we are looking at crashes by um by roadway classification. And want to share um an initial finding that um over our study period, eight percent. Of um crashes in Lakewood are happening on local roadways, whereas ninety-two percent are happening on um all other roadways, so. Collector roadways, uh arterials, um highways, that they they count for ninety-two percent of crashes. And then um ninety-six percent of the severe crashes are happening on those non-local roadways, so. Um while while we're certainly focused on all um all crashes and understanding um the top trends, w- we we are. Um also, you know, in 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 some ways, it it's good to see that um local roadways, so where where residents are. Um sort of m- most um. Uh I guess most tuned in to some of the 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 safety um concerns. Um the the data shows that the the generally speaking, crashes are are less likely to occur on local roadways. And severe crashes are are even less likely to occur, so that that's um that's something that is that that can be um. Important for us to consider as we move ahead. And then looking ahead, um we're we're developing the high injury network as well as the high-risk network, so those are the um. The uh two two networks that reflect a subset of um corridors and intersections where. Crashes are either um severe crashes are either occurring today or may occur um based on some underlying risk factors. Um or identifying planned emphasis areas, so those those are two locations in each of the participating communities where. Um where countermeasures are will be determined to be of highest need uh due to a concentration of. Um crashes and and consistent trends that can be addressed. Um our our recommendations are going to be broad-reaching and touch on the different elements of the safe system approach, so while. Engineering countermeasures like roadway design are certainly play a significant role in in traffic calming and lowering vehicle speeds. Um there's also programmatic initiatives and different policies that can be considered as well. Um and and we'll be very comprehensive in um in assessing all the opportunities for um improving safety outcomes. We'll also be prioritizing um the those recommendations, as I've discussed, and with the goal of ensuring that the most critical needs are met the soonest. Um we'll be drafting the Vision Zero Safety Action Plan for review with the key stakeholders, um and and their input will help shape shape the final plan. And then um lastly, we'll be developing guidance for how to implement the the safety action plan. And this this guidance will include things like funding opportunities, so assessing how to get improvements funded. Um developing a a set of performance measures for for tracking um planned implementation over time. And then um also looking at conceptual design development for high-priority engineering counters. And then just to share a a few examples of what um so s- what has emerged from similar efforts that. Um consort isn't involved in recently, we um recently led the Boulder County Safety Action Plan. And um we developed a countermeasure toolkit, which um which essentially framed out um implementation steps. For specific types of recommendations to address the top crash types, so so for example, um. Here's a a a sample from the plan on um. Countermeasures for left-turn crashes and addressing those, and thi- this um effort included. Providing uh cost considerations as well as um specific types of locations where these countermeasures would be appropriate. Here's another example of um a recommendation profile that we developed as part of the Glenwood Springs um Safety Action Plan, which. Which recently wrapped up, um. Glenwood Springs had a similarly high share of KSI crashes that involve pedestrians. So a number of the plan recommendations involved countermeasures specific to pedestrian safety. So for example, here we're showing pedestrian dark beach islands, which can help reduce crossing distance and make some of those crossings that community members are highlighting as uncomfortable, potentially more comfortable in the future. And then, like I mentioned, we're also evaluating opportunities to revise or adjust any sort of existing policies and standards with safety in mind. So for example, here we're showing one page from the Lakewood Transportation Engineering Standards. And this is the typical cross section for a minor arterial. Minor adjustments that we might propose through this plan if we determine that they'd be that they'd be of value in terms of improving safety outcomes might be things like changing lane widths or typical lane widths to help with traffic calming, potentially looking at opportunities to make left turns a little bit safer through adjusting two-way left turn lanes where crashes can happen fairly often due to sort of the current design lending itself to sort of inherent conflicts with vehicles. So looking, kind of doing a wide scan across all the partner agencies, including Lakewood, looking at existing policies and seeing what kind of adjustments might be might be beneficial for improving safety outcomes. And then we look forward to meeting with you two more times during the planning process. So again, in August, when we have both full results and draft recommendations to review and to present those to council and to understand what questions you might have. And then again, in the spring, March of twenty twenty seven, when we'll be presenting the final plan and requesting council support on adoption. Well, thanks for the opportunity to share an update on the Vision Zero Safety Action Plan. Happy to take any questions.
Christian, thank you so much for that presentation. It's road safety, I mean, no guests to your, no news, new news to you is important to our residents. And that's information we got again recently in our community survey. So hearing your specialist tonight talking about some of the things that you guys have done and what you're working on is really welcomed conversation. So thank you so much for being here and Kelly also for being a part of the conversation tonight as we go through questions and answers. I will go ahead, will open up the floor to any council questions on this particular topic. We'll give everybody a few seconds to raise hands. Mayor Protam and then Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Yes, thank you for this. So excited to see the RFP has been met with a consultant and that this work is getting underway with the county. My question really is just about after the plan is developed, like would the city of Lakewood be going forward in a funding partnership with the county? Or is it sort of everybody gets their recommendations and then we sort of figure that out on our own? Or is there other opportunities on the other side of this sort of planning funding? That may be for staff.
I actually will direct it to Christian if he can talk about how the Lakewood plan fits in. Each municipality has a separate plan. And then the next stage of SS4A, which is implementation funding. And I think Christian could speak more to those details.
Yeah, I'm happy to. So with the SS4A program, there's three types of grant opportunities. So the Safety Action Plan is being funded through a planning grant. There's also implementation funding. So when projects are, when a roadway, for example, roadway design project has a sort of safety component that has been identified through a Vision Zero Action Plan that meets the federal criteria. And it has been demonstrated to include components that have demonstrated efficacy for improving roadway safety outcomes. That community is eligible to pursue that implementation grant funding. That can be done either, you know, Liquid could do that sort of as a standalone effort for any project identified within your individual safety action plan or efficient zero plan that is very liquid specific. The community could go ahead and apply for that funding sort of as on its own. There are examples of regional efforts for implementation funding on corridors that might touch several different jurisdictions and cross municipal boundaries. So that is, that might be an outcome as well if there's a, you know, particular recommendation on Wadsworth, for example, that touches more than one community and not just Lakewood. That there might be some, similar to the planning grant, there might be some appetite to sort of jointly pursue funding with another community. There's also demonstration funding offered through the SS4A program. So if there's any type of pilot initiative that is identified through this effort that the community would like to get federal support to essentially try out, that's another opportunity to either, you know, if it's a very liquid specific initiative to pursue that grant opportunity. But if there's some sort of creative or innovative program, that would be a multi-jurisdictional effort. Again, that you'd be eligible to apply with other jurisdictional partners.
Thank you.
Counselor Cruz. Thank you. Wanted to echo the Mayor and Mayor Putum sentiments about hearing, being excited about the updates that we're hearing and looking forward to more data and digging in as you all move forward this process. So thank you. I just had two brief questions. One, I was interested in, you were mentioning some of the components related to how underserved communities were being defined. And I was just interested how those kinds of criteria were selected and how kind of the mix of things that's coming together in Jeffco was assembled.
That's a great question. We are, we are in the process of ironing out with the project management team, specifically the criteria that we want to assess. But we are trying to look broadly and consider a lot of different factors. So we're looking at income, also proximity to proximity to different resources. So for example, if community members are closer to a school, for example, where there might be a little bit more predisposition to walking or biking to school versus dropping kids off, that might raise the risk picture for that family. So we're looking at different community destinations that folks might need to access and kind of evaluating that as a factor for community need. And then there's a few other sort of demographic indicators that we're considering evaluating. We're in the process of sort of ironing out the methodology. Kelly, if you're comfortable, I could pull up the full list and just kind of read through it. But just want to caveat that that's sort of a work in progress.
I think maybe if Counselor Cruz would like to see that, maybe we could share that later, that full list. Detailed information.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate that. And then I guess my second question related to Mayor Putum's question with sort of the fluctuating environment around federal funding, is there kind of any difference in approach you all are taking with the implementation plan? Or is there kind of an understanding that these are funds that have been available before and are expected to be available in the future?
So the, I'll just say that for the last round of State Streets and Roads for All Funding that was released in June, that was sort of under the current administration. And the funding was released on schedule, so similar to the last two rounds. And the evaluation criteria were largely similar for the grant applicants. So if that's any indicator, we're expecting that next year will sort of play out similarly. But we don't have a crystal ball, so it's a little bit hard to tell. And obviously, it's been a little bit of a moving target with federal funding on a number of different fronts. So hard to say for sure, but just based on our experience from this past year, we did see some consistency with that particular funding source.
Thank you.
Counselor Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you. Honestly, there's just a ton of great content in this presentation. It's really heartening to see. So thank you for all your work. I'm really excited this work is underway. I think it matches something, a lot of things that we've been hearing from our constituents. So this is great. I really, I want to kind of aggressively promote your survey that's on your website. I didn't actually realize that it was open, to be honest. So I want to push that out to constituents and such. It looks, I believe the deadline is December nineteenth, so thank you for flagging. And I think I saw that there's an opportunity for folks to participate in a virtual meeting on your website on December eleventh. Just if, you know, for folks in the middle of the busy holiday season, like will there be opportunities for continued engagement in the first few months of twenty twenty six? Like do you anticipate doing another meeting in Lakewood or two for folks that want to provide input but can't make December eleventh work?
We, that's a great question. Thank you. We currently don't have any planned community engagement for general community engagement for the winter. What we are planning and which I did not touch on are a set of stakeholder interviews. So we're identifying key topic areas like public health, emergency response, things like that, and convening representatives of organizations and agencies that sort of serve those disciplines. And we'll be working with them to have structured conversations to understand things like emergency responder viewpoints on transportation safety. We're in the process of planning those conversations and have not yet issued invitations or anything like that so that we do have some flexibility in how we structure those. If council would want us to see the team sort of look at that as an opportunity to maybe reach people a little bit more broadly. We can certainly evaluate opportunities to sort of open up that interview effort to more community members.
Speaking just for myself, I definitely feel confident that I've got a very long list of folks in Ward Three who have a lot of thoughts and opinions on this. So I think, on the one hand, I definitely don't want to slow this down at all. In fact, if anything, I want to, well, we certainly want to slow down traffic. I want to speed, I don't want to slow down your work. So but I do think if there's an opportunity to do that in early twenty twenty six, that would be welcome. But I could easily have just completely missed this, so I may have a couple if I did. This is a question to staff. Has the survey been promoted in like the Friday report emails? Perhaps it has multiple times and I've just missed it. So, so great.
Yeah, it actually went out in the Friday report before Thanksgiving and it was the number one most clicked link in that full Friday report newsletter. So we did, we were very excited to see that much engagement from Lakewood. Regarding Ward Three specifically, Christian and the project team, we could go back and look at that map where we're seeing comments. And you know, if we're finding maybe a ward that doesn't seem like we're getting enough representation, then that could be an indicator to us that we didn't reach those folks enough and we could step that up. But we have been working with our public information officers to be able to share some of that. We have social media blasts ready to go and we can continue with the Friday newsletters.
Great. Thank you. That's great. I'm so glad it's been there. Maybe if we could make sure it's in like this one too, just so folks can have multiple bites at the apple to respond before the survey closes, I think that would be really helpful. Going back to the consultants, I mean, I mean, one of the themes, I mean, I, first of all, think it's really heartening to see sort of the safe systems mindset, like continually like a sort of a through line in your work. I mean, I think one of the things I heard repeatedly is like there are certain just best practices that you've seen in other cities. I mean, I heard you talk several times about things like street narrowing, lane narrowing, you know, traffic calming. I mean, one of the things, you know, just sort of design, just a high level design features that really deter speed, you know, is sort of a really an emerging best practice that like a lot of cities around the country are embracing. And the need to kind of rethink some traffic engineering, you know, best practices maybe from fifty, sixty years ago in favor of just getting people to slow down, I guess, to maybe oversimplify. I mean, is it safe to say there are certain features, like, like just for instance, lane narrowing, just to pick one example, that like, I understand you've got a lot of work ahead of you, but like, I see, I can't imagine that your final action plan is not going to have some recommendations around like sort of low-cost measures that would encourage people to slow down. Is that, is that fair?
I think at this stage, that's fair to say. Certainly, we haven't, we haven't gotten into recommendations development quite yet, but I think it, I do agree it's safe to say that that the final plan will include a menu of traffic calming measures the city could consider. And I know that the city is already both considering and advancing some of these traffic calming interventions throughout the community. So it certainly wouldn't be new information, but the action plan is certainly an opportunity to kind of bring forward best practices from other communities and make sure that those are documented, you know, within the city plan as opportunities for improving safety outcomes through design interventions that are trying to lower vehicle speeds.
One other thing, it seems like a lot, you know, a lot of folks that are really studying this nationally. I mean, you clearly know a lot more about this than I do. But, you know, I've seen, you know, organizations like Strong Towns, for instance, champion like relatively low-cost strategies, things like rocks, curbs, crossings, flex posts, you know, quick build, low-cost options, just for instance, things like temporary mini-traffic circles, bump outs, bio swells, like things like, you know, things that are not like massively high-cost infrastructure things. I mean, have those kind of low, lower-cost sort of quick win strategies? Have you seen that work effectively in other cities? I would just welcome your view on that as someone who's clearly studied this.
Sure. Oh, I can provide, I guess, a quick local example from Denver. Denver did move forward with putting in place some lower investment traffic calming measures during COVID. So essentially, you know, painted curb extensions, flexible posts, things that didn't require actually removing, removing curb lines and basically put in place paint and flexible post delineators both at intersections and then in neighborhoods where the neighborhood bikeway program was advancing traffic calming interventions with mentor traffic circles and increased signage, things like that. Some of the more effective countermeasures that Denver learned about and their sort of post-implementation evaluation was that traffic diversion tends to be really effective and that is often put in place purely with signage and just making motorists aware that they shouldn't, you know, turn left, for example, onto a roadway if that happens to be a neighborhood bikeway. So that was, that was one takeaway the city had in when they were sort of looking back at pre and post data and understanding what had moved the needle. Also, things like speed humps can be really effective in a relatively low cost. I think the, I don't want to say tricky, but the consideration that we always try to balance is what has been shown to be effective in other communities with kind of what local residents feel reflects the character of the community. And that can really change from jurisdiction to jurisdiction. So we always try to work with each community we support to understand sort of what's going to align, what kind of treatments will align with local engineering standards, what kind of treatments community members will, what kind of value seeing out in the public right away. And sometimes it's a matter of educating folks on the efficacy of different treatments. But sometimes it's But sometimes it's, you know, more more a matter of of understanding what the local preference is and and sort of accommodating that as much as possible.
Thanks. Forgive me, Mayor, I just have a couple more questions. I know we've got a packed agenda. To staff, question to staff, so it was really helpful to get a timeline update on Vision Zero. So it sounds like bottom line, we're expecting more engagement touchpoints in 2026, and then a Vision Zero action plan presented in early 2027. There's been some talk about like a traffic calming study or strategy, like strategy. Is that sort of, to the extent that there's a traffic calming strategy coming to council, is that probably going to be the Vision Zero action plan in early 2027? Or is there something else that we'll see earlier that's separate from that, or are we not sure yet?
That's our discussion we're going to do on the next topic after this one.
Right.
But my idea is if we're councils on the same page as where staff is, that we would do that early next year, and then whatever comes out of Safe Streets for All would be a second effort at updating it.
Well, I guess here's what I'm what I'm driving at. The, it, 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 I, thank you. It's really great to get an update on this work. I think this is really something we can take back to our constituents. And there's a lot of good stuff we just heard about. It does strike me that there are some, I, I would think some some relatively lower costs, like lower hanging fruit things that that maybe could be that I would expect to be in a final Vision Zero action plan. And just thinking about the timeline of all this, I would hate for some of those things to wait until we see a final action plan in early 2027. And then, you know, to the counselor, the questions that that Counselor Shara Zai and Counselor Cruz were asking, like, we don't want to then be, have to wait more, more time to figure out a way to fund implementation. So to the extent that maybe some relatively lower cost things that could be done faster could be sort of taken out of the Vision Zero work and accelerated in 2026. I know this gets into the discussion we're about to have next, but I wanted to raise it now just because it seems really relevant to the Vision Zero action plan. I mean, that would be my strong preference. I don't, I, I do just want to want to finish by saying, I, the reason I'm, I've asked several questions here is, is I've, I've heard about this a lot in Ward Three. The survey is great. I mean, I will say like, we've had a survey circulating in Ward Three and also recently Ward Two that that alone got 120 responses over the last three months. And I'd be, I'd be very glad to share that those with staff if that would be helpful and something that could be sort of included in your work. In fact, I'd love to do that, actually. You know, for the last two years, I've, I've heard literally hundreds of people on collectors like Mississippi, Jewel, Pierce, just to name three examples, and there's others in Ward Three express real concern about about speed and safety and sort of, you know, just feeling not entirely safe as pedestrians or cyclists or drivers, but especially pedestrians and cyclists. And it's just, it's just a theme I've heard over and over and over again. So I think there's real excitement about this work. I think the work is really important. I think it's something that I don't want to, I don't think it's possible to overstate how much people in Lakewood really do care about this. So to the extent that we have an opportunity to maybe move some of these lower hanging fruit things forward before a final action plan comes to us in 2027, I'd be very enthusiastic about that.
Well, Mr. Whitaker, would that not be, we're, you know, we're going to be moving into our goal setting in February that would also, there was a lot of work that you guys have done throughout the year that we don't necessarily have updates on. I would imagine some of that would envelop into this. What work that you guys have already, I mean, because we're, we've been working on traffic safety. I know you guys have been working on it for quite some time, probably ever since we had roads. But continuing to, I think what we're looking at here through the projects that we're discussing tonight is helping us kind of narrow in, here's the work that is ongoing at this moment. But we'll get more update, I would imagine, when we come to retreat, you know, coming back to Counselor Lo's question, I think that update is forthcoming.
Yes, and I would say, with our discussion on the second topic tonight, my hope is that there's clear consensus that you want to see some changes in our current policy that we can implement sooner in that hopefully February, March timeframe next year and not have to be a whole another year out until Safe Streets is complete to be adopted.
Counselor Lo, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to, I don't want to drone on, so we can, we can move to maybe the the next topic and talk about it more then. I mean, I guess, based on the memo and the presentation that we saw and sort of what we're going to review next, like, there are certain, you know, the idea of, there are certain traffic calming best practices on collectors that that are, that I'm, would be excited to see move forward. But I, but I think these topics clearly link to me, because I think part of what our consultants are, are pointing toward is there's a whole, there's a, there's a wider array of of sort of things ranging from really high intensity infrastructure improvements to to lower, to, to, you know, easier things to be done that that have been proven to get people to slow down on collectors. And, and I, I guess I would, my hope is that we can be as expansive as possible within the constraints of our budget in terms of the the strategies and the improvements we're looking at, ranging from long term, you know, multi-year improvements that may not happen right away to like lower cost, you know, things like repainting roads or, you know, using very, you know, low cost materials to like, if where possible, reduce speeds. So my, my hope, we can, we can talk about that next, but my hope is that as wide, the wide universe of things that our consultants are looking at in Vision Zero right now, my hope is that those will be on the table to the greatest extent possible as we start looking at improvements on collectors, if that makes sense.
That does make sense. I do want to clarify, though, the the Vision Zero Safety Action Plan is more focused on where we are seeing those fatal and severe crashes and also where we're seeing the risk of the fatal and severe crashes. And I also hear it a lot from the residents as well, you know, feeling unsafe speeding, but we're not necessarily seeing the crashes. And so to me, that that is some of that lower hanging fruit narrowing the lanes, bump outs, et cetera. Whereas the Vision Zero Action Plan is looking at those more expensive capital improvements, like the refuge meeting, we saw traffic signal changes. So as staff, that's how I see those separately, but they absolutely do converge in how residents in the city see traffic safety.
Yeah, I think, I mean, you said it yourself, right? Like, your presentation makes the point, like collectors, you know, arterials and collectors are overwhelmingly where, you know, bad collisions are happening. And so my, I guess my point is, obviously, I understand, like, I understand that we, I take time to put together a thoughtful Vision Zero plan. But meanwhile, you know, some people are dying. And so to the extent that we can identify, you know, proven best practices that, you know, Denver or Boulder or other cities around the country are using, like, my plea is let's not wait until 2027 to do those things on collectors. Let's figure out a way to do those things on collectors, at least pilot those things on collectors faster than that. That's, that's, I think, my, my bottom line.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our next subject tonight. And with that, Mr. Whitaker, I will hand the floor over to you to discuss or open up the conversation on traffic calming discussion and proposed policy updates.
Okay, hopefully you can see my presentation.
Yep.
All right, so give us a little history. Lakewood's been doing speed humps since 1994. Pretty similar over the years, petition process from a resident on the block, basically 50/50 match, we do a volume check. Certain streets, you know, local streets, 30 miles an hour or less. Policy said, you know, one hump per block, at least 700 feet between humps. Don't do it on, you know, steep streets, sharp curves, RTD bus routes. If you have truck traffic over 5%, emergency response routes. And then we were limited to 25 per year, and it was just prioritized by matching funds, and that resolution passed Council's seven to three. In 2000, basically, we modified that policy, or previous staff did. And they added just the average speed of the traffic traveling on that roadway must be more than the posted speed. From talking to previous staff, there was a feeling around the community that too many humps were being installed on streets where it wasn't necessarily needed, and so they wanted to start restrict. So now we're here in 25, trying to get to policies and, you know, we started out thinking that, you know, one way, since we've gone from 30 miles an hour on local streets to 20, maybe we split the difference and say average speed has to be at least five miles an hour over the posted speed. But as we just heard, only about 4% of crashes happen on local streets. And so we'd prefer as staff to follow Boulder. And Boulder kind of did the same thing. They paused their work on local streets. They're not installing speed humps anymore since 2022. And they're just focusing their staff and their existing money on arterials and collectors where most of our ASI injuries are happening. We can get into a little bit more. I'm sure you've all read it. If we're going to keep a policy, we'd like to have the ability to just shorten the spacing because it'll help slow the speeds down more if we can get down into that, you know, 400 or 500 foot target. So that's one of the discussions to have. We'd like to up the volume a little bit. If we have a policy at all, obviously, we'd like to 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 put a pause on local speed humps and redirect our staff and money. But as we were just talking with Counselor Lo, we've done some trials on what's called speed cushions so that we can use them on minor collector roads. As you can see in the picture, these have a couple slots in them that we've spaced for West Metro Fire vehicles to straddle the center line and basically go over the hump with with less jarring to the vehicle and the occupants. It's not quite as effective as a normal speed hump, because even some cars may choose to put one of their wheels in that in that slot. But it usually is a little, little too wide for the both wheels to go down, so usually at least partially on the hump. And depending on your vehicles, it can make it worse if you only have one hump or one wheel on a hump versus two wheels. So it's kind of vehicles depending on what's the best way to go over it is. So that's one of the policy changes we would like to propose is allow us to put speed cushions out on collectors, major street plan. The the green lines are the minor collectors, which are a lot of the streets we've been talking about. Sorry, I must have must have a time going on. So the blue ones are major collectors, and so depending on the volume on some of those streets, we could do cushions or not. So it could be a little more restrictive and a little harder to do on some of the blue collectors that are major collectors just because of the volumes on them. We might have to look at other things like we talked about bulb outs and other situations. Just a brief recap, Jeffco requires 1,000 cars per day, and 30% or more exceed the limit by five miles an hour. Golden's 500 cars, 85% over posted speed. We talked about Denver doesn't have a program right now. They just do select neighborhoods for the most part. Arvada did a trial on Grand View and 57th. But they removed most of those devices in 2024 at the conclusion of the trial. And as I mentioned, Boulder stopped installing humps to focus on collectors and arterials. So this is kind of the first touch point for Council to give me some feedback. When we want to continue with with speed humps on local streets, do we want to redirect staff just to work on collectors and arterials? And do a pause for now, and that way we can use our our staff and our budget towards those events. And then specifically, when we start talking about speed cushions on minor collectors, you know, they'll go up to about 6,500 cars per day for cushions. But I think part of the question is, do we want to do a petition? Or do we want to just, you know, go through some of the data that we have and and hit the streets that we know are the worst? And that goes into cost share. Do we need a cost share on a collector, or is this all just going to be city funded? And then, you know, are there any thresholds we want to throw on there that the average, you know, has to be five over the the speed limit? Or do we want to pool all the projects and just select them at the end of the year to spend the money that we do have for this program? And then a reminder that feedback signs are still an option. So that was kind of the first touch point on existing policy. I was hoping to get some input to know what to bring back to Council, hopefully.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Whitaker. You had a number of questions there, and I'm going to need some help probably distilling those down into actual council votes. But before we do, we'll go ahead and open up the floor to any, I imagine there's going to be some questions before we start picking any of those. So we'll start, we'll go with Counselor Ryan, then Counselor Sinks, then Counselor Furman.
My question is pretty short and maybe no longer answered, but what's the staff's recommendation?
Staff's recommendation is to put a pause, just like Boulder, and just have us work on collectors and arterials where we're seeing that 96% of the injury and fatals are happening. You know, we should be putting our money where the problem is, for the most part, is the way we kind of look at it.
And by pause, then, you would not be doing the minor collectors?
No, minor collectors we would do. Right now, we don't have a policy to do, though. We've just experimented with those. The only policy Council has approved so far is speed humps on local streets. So I would like to put a pause on that and just have us work on speed cushions on collectors. And then, if there's some work that we can do on arterials that makes sense, we could potentially do that as well. But I would think for the next year, while Safe Streets for All is completing, that we'd be pretty busy on collectors.
I'm going to ask you just to see if you can, I'm going to test your memory. When you were kind enough to talk at Ward Four, there were a number of residents in a particular community that were talking about wanting a speed cushion. Would that, is that a mine, is that area a minor collector in your mind then?
I'm sorry, I don't remember the location. Was this the people at Harlan and Jewel?
Yes, I think, Counselor Furman, do you remember?
Alkar.
Alkar, thank you.
Oh, Alkar, we do have a set of speed cushions further south. The people wanted it closer to the north towards Cedar, and so that street would be eligible, yes.
So that that'd be considered a minor collector?
Alkar is a minor collector, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. About how many speed humps do you put in per year?
We do $75,000 worth is what we have budgeted, which gets us about 25 speed humps. I will admit, some years we don't get through the whole budget, because it's quite a process to get approved. I can tell you, we've looked at 44 sites this year. 13 of the sites, the average traffic was between 20 and 25. Eight of the sites had speeds over 25. And 22 of the sites fell below the 300 vehicles per day threshold, so we didn't evaluate them any further.
Sorry, go ahead.
And the only other point I was going to say is, of those eight sites that were over 25 mile an hour average speed, that included all the sites that had more than 4% of the traffic doing 35 miles an hour or higher. That had more than four percent of the traffic doing thirty-five miles an hour or higher.
Great, thanks. And so currently they go through petitions. And then residents have to pay fifty percent. And the city pays the other fifty percent. About what would be the cost about to the residents? What would the fifty percent be?
It's about three thousand dollars a hump. So a lot of the sites currently. We would be putting in two speed humps usually on a request, depending on the length of the block. So they've been paying about three thousand.
Okay. And then how does that compare? How does the price compare to the speed cushions? And so first of all, the price per speed cushion and then. Well, just the price first of all, and then I'll ask another question.
The price is pretty comparable. It's, it's, I don't remember exactly how many hundreds of dollars more it is because there's some more handwork to make those slots. But it's fairly comparable.
Okay. And would you foresee that it would be best to keep the fifty fifty for the speed cushions as well?
I think it really depends on the street. Some collectors. You know, have a lot of crashes. And a lot of higher speeds. And so to me, that's more of a city problem than a resident problem. So I think that's kind of the difference in my book from a local street where it's just mainly the local residents to a collector. Where it could be several neighborhoods that, you know, drive down that road. It's not really as fair to say that. You know, the residents in this petition area where the humps are going to be or the speed cushions. Should pay for all the traffic that's going down that road.
Excuse me. I would also interject that we need to look at that policy of fifty percent or fifty fifty. Because that does cause some concern. While in certain neighborhoods, that's. You know, a few hundred dollars apiece is not a big deal in other areas it is. So we don't want that to be a consideration that. Limits people from putting in these devices and following the process. So we want to lower that barrier to entry. And make sure that that's still available. So we might want to look at a program similar to what Community Resources has that allows for a scholarship or some sort of additional sharing. To lower that cost in. For areas or for people who may not be able to afford that cost. Just an added thought, thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Mayor, if I might just make one last comment. That is, yeah, it's great to collect all this data and data is so important and where the crashes, et cetera. But it's also great that we give our residents the the feeling of being safe. So for example, one street over, some people have said to me, oh, my gosh, there's so much speeding here. And there's probably never been a crash. But there's no real feeling of safety for them on the street because people just speed down their street. So I think I would also be making decisions based on helping people feel safe. And and not just. Make decisions on how many crashes are in a place. So that was mine, thank you.
Councillor Furman, then councillor Nystrom. And then councillor Ken Cruz.
Sorry, the mute was taking a moment. I just a few questions, but I can be quick, I promise. How many, just so, and maybe I misunderstood and maybe it was clear, but. For example, the forty-four sites you looked at, how many of those are from petitions? Like, how many petitions do you typically get in a year? Is there a general average for that?
Those are all from petitions.
Okay.
Because those are all currently on on local streets.
Okay. And. And so can you. Can you clarify for me, would. The petition process is only necessary on the local streets? Or is that going to be necessary as well on the minor collectors?
That's one of the questions we'd have to develop an answer to. As I mentioned. I mean, we can do a petition as. Saying that they have a problem on this street. As councillor Lowe's mentioned, I mean, staff has a pretty good idea. Where most of the complaints have come in over the years. So I mean, there's a bunch of streets we could start off without ever needing a petition. But it's always, it's always helpful to have somebody local, though, to talk to the neighbors and. And discuss it as well. So it depends on how much public input we want versus, you know, a city program.
And can you clarify for me? I believe the petition requires what, ninety-five percent of the people? But what is the area that is required for that participation in the petition?
We typically do the block. If it's a super long block, sometimes we'll cut it short. But usually it goes. You know, four to five houses past the last speed device.
Okay. Well, those are my primary questions. I, I. I will say the the speed over the number of cars seems like a stronger metric as it indicates need versus. Versus how much of a need. But anyway, thank you.
Councillor Nystrom.
Thank you. I just, I have a concern with kind of putting a pause on these things. We have a lot of situations now where people are. Going through neighborhoods at a high rate of speed. Because they're running parallel with like Wadsworth or Jewel and things like that. And that literally while I was out canvassing, I was speaking to someone who was out in her yard and they. A speed hump had just been put in. A little bit south of her before a four-way intersection. And she said people are still flying through there. And they really need another speed hump put in. And that's indicative of a lot of different neighborhoods. And literally while I was standing there, somebody flew over the speed bump, ran the stop sign and kept going. And that's, that's kind of an increasing issue. So I, you know, I'd be a little concerned with. Not addressing those in residential neighborhoods because that's where, in addition to. Main roads, people, kids are out playing, people are on bikes, things like that. Were walking to and from school. And I would be a little concerned with not addressing, you know. Kind of putting a pause on addressing those types of things. But that's all, just a comment.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ken Cruz, then councillor Isabel Cruz, then councillor Low.
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, the the crash data is clear. Right, ninety, ninety, it was ninety-six percent of severe crashes aren't happening on neighborhood streets. They're happening on streets in Ward Three that I know about, that that the communities invoke about Mississippi, Kipling, Wadsworth and Jewel. All those being corridors or collectors, my apology. You know, and realistically, these roads were designed for speed, not safety. And I think we could really make meaningful affordable changes. Now by implementing, you know, those things on collectors. And like my co-councillor, councillor Low mentioned earlier. That's, you know, looking at paint, looking at post-curb extensions. You know, and I really think that improving crossings is another thing that needs to be considered as well. Especially with kids walking through these streets. So I support modernizing the program. But we, I agree, you know, we can't pause work on the roads where people are getting hurt. You know, and I just really encourage that we use practical incremental approach to this that keeps people safe. While the long-term plan is finalized.
My only caveat there would be Kipling and Wadsworth are arterials. So a little different class of road, but.
Thank you.
Councillor Cruz.
Thank you. I wanted to better understand in like staff's recommendation of pausing on some of the neighborhood. Streets work and thinking more about the collectors. Like, is the thought essentially if we were to try to do both, that we would do neither well? And can you talk a little bit more about what your understanding of like Boulder's experience has been in making that decision? I think that that would be helpful for us in that consideration. And additionally, like. At least my impression of Boulder is potentially that they have kind of more of a of a network of speed. Of like speed mitigation built out already in some of their neighborhood streets. So would just love to better understand some of the background of that recommendation and your thoughts on the amplification for the department's work.
The biggest driver right now is staff and money. I've got one of my three engineers totally tied up on local streets right now. And it's got eighty thousand of my. Four hundred and fifty so thousand dollars. Just dedicated to that local street speed hump program. And so I don't have the staff capacity or really the funding to to do what we need to do on collectors right now.
Okay. That's helpful. And so it would be sort of infeasible or in thinking about a both and approach and thinking about splitting that person's time in that way?
With the current policy, yes, because he's still got to spend the time that he's spending all year now on local streets. So I don't know how I can ask him to also start looking at collectors. Without somehow reducing the amount of work coming from local streets.
Got it, that's very helpful. I also, we had, I think you had mentioned in the conversation around this update a little bit ago. That there was like a possibility for sort of identification of. Particular areas that maybe would have resident input, but might not be centered on the like resident. Identification and petition process, which can be really onerous. I know I've talked to residents who have spent like dozens of hours talking to neighbors in in effort of getting a petition. So would love to understand what some of the options for identifying some of those areas would look like beyond the petition process.
Yeah, I think once. We've got a couple of ways we could look at it. One, we obviously have history of which collector segments. Have got the most complaints already through Request Lakewood. And we can sort, sort through those requests to kind of prioritize past requests. Obviously, people could still put in requests and they would go into the pot as well. I'll have to think a little bit more about how do we. Quickly assess which collectors have the worst problems, whether it's volume, speeds. What data we could pull. There's some. Some different options out there, but that's one of the things I'll have to come back with you on is is a more complete thought on. How we would roll this out and funding is obviously another potential one that we've had a few ideas where. We've looked at, you know, from the census data, at least at the census tract level. What the average income for certain blocks are. And maybe there's a proportional share based on, you know, what your census tract is. And so, you know, if you're in. You know, a certain higher end area out at Solterra, you're not paying the same as, as, you know, a little place off North Colfax. It's probably. Commensurate with with your income would be the idea and not, you know, just a set number.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's helpful. Because I mean, I do think the second piece is the cost share portion. I think what is, you know, three thousand dollars in a city budget is very different and like an individual in a neighborhood budget. And is a concern that I've heard from this, many of the residents I know who have been through the process. So would love to explore options beyond that and think about budgeting in in a way that increases the city's share and thinks differently about. What the resident share is and what buy-in looks like. So just signaling that that is something that I'd really love to see. And also just, I think, you know, time is money too. And just really the petition process itself is quite onerous. And so whatever we can do sort of in, you know, the same way that I think is modeled in the conversation we'll have around sidewalks. Thinking about how we use some of these external factors rather than just relying on, you know, citizen input, I think would be really helpful. I also just wanted to ask about. I really appreciate and I'm on board with the recommendations around, you know, bringing minor collectors into the. To the scheme of things, but I also am aware of looking at some of the major collectors that some of those are the. Big offenders on the list of things residents talk to us about. And so would love to understand why not major collectors as well.
Usually it's a volume aspect as far as. What percentage of vehicles, obviously going over a speed hump is. Is. Difficult for some people. When we put the speed humps out in front of the city council chambers there on the parking deck. That was one of the biggest concerns we got from a lot of the elderly that were going to classes. Carmody Rec Center, we talked about putting some speed humps in their parking lot. And they chose not to do it because of majority of their patients or their. Customers. Were elderly and they were afraid that, you know, the back implications and the jarring was more than it was worth. So there's some physical stuff that happens, you know, as you go over speed humps or speed cushions. That most cities stop off at a certain higher threshold. You start going to other things, whether it's, you know, there's some other options we could do. Obviously, the the bulb outs and other things to narrow the lanes and try to get the speed controlled in a different way than a vertical deflection. You can do chicanes, you can do different things based on the number of volume you have. Once you get above a certain threshold of volume.
Okay, that's helpful. I think that leads into my last question. And thinking about, I mean, I understand because we've had, you know, coming up over thirty years of a. Speed hump policy, why that's sort of the focus. And then thinking about speed cushions as well. But with, you know, some of the other options for lower hanging fruit, as many of my colleagues have been using the term of. Traffic calming solutions that maybe might be more fitting for some of those major collectors, et cetera. Just curious, and I understand, right? We're asking for do more, do it faster. With the budget we have or or increasing it, that's another conversation you have to have. But just sort of curious. Whether you all think it's feasible to in this sort of shorter timeframe, think about a broader. Array of traffic calming measures in this capacity? Or if like the thought on y'all's end is that the focus on humps and bumps. Is the most feasible with the amount of time given the history of the program?
I mean, as far as staff, we'd like to, you know, focus on cushions. You know, on roads as far as we can, you know, push the volume. And then we would probably transition to chicanes or bulb outs or other features. On those higher volume collectors. Arterials. We've already done some speed control just on timing of signals and other things that we can still tweak a little bit on that. But I think for the next year until Safe Streets for All is is out. Just working on on minor collectors and possibly some of the lower volume major collectors. Would be more than we could probably handle.
Okay, that's helpful. And I think just from like a signaling perspective. I think I'm open to the conversation, would love to to debate sort of the the move towards. Minor, focusing on minor collectors. I think it's hard, right? Because our residents have different things that they want and neighborhood streets certainly are a concern. And I think we do need to focus on them. And I think that, you know, our collectors have not necessarily been getting the same type of attention in this capacity. And so I think it's worth having a conversation and from a safety and prioritization perspective. And so I'm supportive initially of the move and would love to hear more from our Ward Two folks about that. And again, would love, yeah, just further creativity and less burden on our residents, both from the petition and the. Cost share perspective, so thank you.
Councillor Low.
Thank you. As always, I appreciate the points my, the other councillors have made. To kind of get right at like the the key, one of the key questions that Mr. Whitaker is asking us, like. This is not a great situation to be in, but like, I think at the end of the day, we really have no choice. Like in terms of the decision we're making now in the near future. But to say that we ought to focus on the collectors, I mean, the data is just overwhelming, right? I mean, ninety-two percent of crashes, ninety-two, ninety-six percent of serious crashes. That absolutely matches what we see in other cities. It frankly matches what we're hearing from residents that like, I mean, collectors, these these collector streets. That absolutely matches what we see in other cities. It frankly matches what we're hearing from residents that like, I mean, collectors, these these collector streets are 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 where the highest risk of like a serious, um, you know, pedestrian or cyclist or car crash is. And so with with limited sort of staff and scarce resources, like I I I frankly think it's the only responsible choice, I I would argue, is for us to say, let's prioritize limited resources on those collectors. That's where we're going to save more lives. That's where we're going to keep our residents safest. Um, I mean, that said, I I I don't want to beat around the bush on this. Like like this to me dramatizes why I look, I I I do think that this this discussion exposes that we we really do need some more staff and and funding capacity focused on this issue. In my, I'm I'm just speaking for my help myself here, but but I'm channeling what I've heard over and over from my constituents. This is a huge priority. Folks want the city to do more. And I I want to make sure that public um Public Works has the staff capacity and the resources to to do this and to be able to like um to to have the capacity to sort of look at the collectors, but not completely pause the residential speed hump programs. Where I do agree, we also have heard from a lot of our residents that want to see some residential speed humps. But I think Mr. Whitaker Whitaker has a totally valid um challenge right now that because of the the production of twenty miles per hour, which was a good thing that we did, and I'm really glad we did it. But it's it's consuming, you know, very very limited uh uh resources and staff time uh with residential uh with residential street traffic calming. So I I mean, I'm just gonna say it like I I would, I wonder if there's a way, you know, we we one of the things we heard from our CFO during the last budget cycle is that there is um some capacity in the reserve for like major council priorities. Um, I'm certainly willing to wait like past the retreat when we have an opportunity to sort of talk about council priorities. But I I just want to signal I plan to make the to to suggest that this this um safety thing should be one of one of our um real priorities in twenty twenty-six, and I would love the opportunity to potentially vote on a a small targeted supplemental to make sure that we have an additional FTE if that's what um the city manager and staff think is necessary in order to not have to just make a sort of an either or trade off here. That said, in terms of the question we're being asked tonight, I think we need to focus on collectors. I'll just briefly piggyback on Counselor Isabel Cruz's question. Uh, on the major collectors, I mean, Mr. Whitaker, like, wh- what about um? You know, you talked about you talked about like some things like this, or the bump outs and some of these other strategies. But what, you know, what about like, this to me is work, it connects back to this, the the vision zero thing that we just heard about. I mean, what about uh some of these lower cost strategies, you know, using things like rocks or curbs or flex posts? Um, or, you know, sort of these temporary, I know you talked a little bit about this at the award meeting. Thank you again for coming to that. But temporary traffic circles, like, could those be things that we look at on major collectors?
Sorry, when I when I mentioned sp- bulbouts, I was talking temporary posts. I wasn't thinking we would do concrete at this point. That would be something after Safe Streets for All um where we were hitting targeted areas that we knew were serious problems. So most of the stuff we would do at this time would be, you know, using the flex posts for the most part or the the plastic curbing, rubber curbing type devices that are, you know, quick build. Because we don't, we don't get into drainage issues. We don't have to, you know, put in drainage pipes, catch basins, all that stuff with with the flex posts.
Got it. I mean, look, a- as a matter just of public policy, I mean, on some of these these collectors, I think there's enough, you know, where where the traffic data and the crash data suggests that there's an issue. I'll also signal, I don't, I don't think that there's there's a need to, um, I I don't think that the 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 rationale for the for petitions, which we had on a residential street, applies to a to a minor collector. Like if there's crash data that shows that it's a higher estimated, um, you know, collector, I think we should empower staff to to put um speed cushions there without the need for a petition. I do think that should be the priority. Um. But what I uh, so in terms of the short term, I think like we we want to, we ought to direct staff to focus on the collectors. But I also think that we we need to do everything possible to make sure that there's the the staff and the resources to be able ultimately to not have to pick or choose, right? To be able to do um to still be able to move forward with with a a residential speed bump program where we have a community that, you know, overwhelmingly says via petition that they really, really, really want that. But I really don't want that to come at the cost of being able to do the this traffic coming on on collectors. I just, I, you know, I I know it's easy, it's easy on council to say do it all, but I I really do think this is an area where it it isn't, we're not doing our job if we just say, oh, yeah, let's just, let's just give up, do one at the expense of the other. Um. Can I also just briefly ask, um, Mr. Whitaker, you you mentioned radar feedback signs? Um, I know, but I know that those have been deployed sort of in a in a couple of places. Like, do we have, um, have we collected systematic data? Or I wonder if our 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 vision zero consultants have looked at like, how mu- how good is the data that like when you introduce um a radar feedback sign on a major collector, like, does it actually get people to slow down? Do is is that evidence based? Do we know that's true? Or is or is that something where we could collect more data over the next year and actually ask that question?
Um, it changes over time. So the all the the radar feedback units we use uh collect data. I wouldn't say it's the most accurate data because being a radar, it picks up the first car in a platoon very well, but it may not know that there's three cars or four cars. So we don't count on the volumes that it gives, but the speed data, at least for that first car that's kind of driving the speed that they want to um is pretty accurate. Um, so we we put them out usually in the dark mode or off mode for a week. It try to get the baseline of what's going on on the street, and then we'll turn on the display for another week. Um, and it shows us, I mean, they have reports in it that show you, you know, this was free display, this is after the display, and you can see, you know, two to three miles an hour, sometimes four dropping speeds. Um, but you do see on the permanent sites over time, some drivers become accustomed to them and they don't respond to them as well. Um, some drivers still, you know, it's just like a reminder, you know. The sign says, hey, I'm doing thirty-seven and it's only a thirty, and so they'll slow down. So it's kind of a mixed bag on permanent sites.
But there it sounds like there is data that there is a marginal, but but very real effect on on speed on collectors when you deploy these.
Especially when they're first deployed, there's a there's a big difference, which is why we have temporary ones that we just move around.
Right. So I just, I mean, I wonder if it could, could we get more? I mean, just in terms of looking at lower cost ways, like, could we, I mean, I don't know what the, I mean, how much does one uh radar feedback sign cost? Just like ball, I mean, I have no idea, no idea.
Um. The cost huh isn't super high. It's, I think they're in that five to six range a piece. We've got six of them. Um, we right now just roll them out um by request. Um, what I would like to do is actually just make sure that those are always out somewhere instead of just doing it by request um would be a first good step to do with them. Um, but there is, to get that data, there is a nine thousand dollar a year cost. I forget what it is for each one, but, you know, seven hundred and fifty bucks or so to get that data from every sign a year a software licensing cost.
Okay, um, well, I I think we should buy more of them. I think we should deploy more of them around and and move them around on major collectors because that seems like something we can do that's relatively fast and and low cost. And at least is is it doesn't completely solve the problem, but at least it's something that's responsive and it, you know, we don't have it. It's something that can be done relatively quickly. Um. And and one final thing, I mean, I'll go over and in addition, you know, making sure that you have the staff and the resources to do major collectors, minor collectors, and do residential speed humps where residents overwhelmingly ask for them. I I'd love to to see, I mean, there some of these things, like the fact, for instance, that radar feedback signs actually that we're collecting data when they're dark and then put on, and that we have data that shows that they're slower. I like, that's just a good example of like, that's great. I'd love to be able to tell that to constituents. I'd love, I'd love for some of the things that we're doing um in the traffic calming realm to be sort of gathered together somehow and 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 put in a in a more formal, you know, here's all the things that Lakewood is doing on this front in twenty twenty. And I know that vision, clearly the vision zero plan is going to have some of that, but it also sounds like we're not going to see that plan until the first, you know, quarter or two of twenty twenty-seven. Um, so I'd love to be able to see all, you know, all the good work that your team is doing, you know, in part so that we can share that with our constituents. But I also don't think it's reasonable to ask you to do that, given that you've just told us that you're short staffed. So I think what I'd really like to see is is for you to have another staffer or two working on all this so that you actually have the ability to do um all of these things.
Director DeAndrea.
Yes, thank you. Um, and and good points from all council members. I just wanted to add in there, you know, that we can certainly come back. Um, if that's more discussion at the retreat with on this topic, you know, come back and talk more about funding options um and how we can deploy that so that you are armed with that information.
Thank you. And I apologize for pounding the table a little bit more than normal. I I I I don't mean to be giving anyone a hard time. I I just, I also feel like I am doing my job by channeling a lot of feedback I've gotten on this issue in Ward Three over the last two years. So thank you and thank you for all the hard work you do on this on this incredibly challenging issue.
Okay, so with that, let's go ahead and um try to pin down some direction here um for staff. What I'm what I'm wondering is it maybe, it sounds like maybe it could make it a little bit easier for council if could it possibly, could there be a path forward where we are we are pausing the humps um while we evaluate, review and reconsider the program there. So the the message is actually not that we're not doing them, we're not de-prioritizing them. What we're trying to do, um, and I'm hearing council feedback, some some thoughts and and maybe preferences on do we do it, you know, doing it data, going by data instead of petitions? And do we want to do the cost share? You know, there's a number of reasons why cost share may not be the best really when we're looking holistically throughout the community. So could it be something that what we're doing tonight is saying we're pausing the humps while we're reevaluating, recreating that process? And then we will open up something like that again. Could that be something, it's not like one or the other, it's kind of melding the two, I guess, is what I'm trying to land on. Counselor Sinks.
Yeah, that that sounds good. I wonder if we could have a timeframe for the pause. In in other words, not just leave it open ended, but a pause for X number of months or or whatever for us to um for the staff to come back to us with more specifics on the hump program.
Director DeAndrea, would I send that question to you?
Yes, certainly. Um, and and, yeah, I think what we can do is come back with, yeah, what's what is a melded program look that fits within our available resources currently? And then what could we do potentially have other options that might re- uh require additional resources, whether staff and or funding?
So if we were to do that, what could be a reasonable timeframe? If we say, yes, we want to pause while we review, what would the duration of that pause need to be?
I'll ask Mike to answer that. He has a better handle on that.
Um, not knowing what's going to come out of council retreat and any supplemental things that may happen, I would say we pause it for the duration of the SS4A project. And so we'll have to come back to you in early twenty-seven. Um, so essentially, it's a year pause. Which could become shorter if, you know, staff or budget becomes available sooner.
And with that, if we pause the humps, are there still other traffic calming measures that could be looked at in those areas? Are we just talking about humps or we're saying neighborhood streets in general?
Um. That's pretty much all we do for neighborhood streets for traffic calming. Um, obviously, if there's, you know, crashes, we'd still investigate those or, you know, pedestrian crossings, those types of things. Um, but as far as traffic calming, we would just pause the humps for twenty twenty-six essentially and uh go through the the budget again for revised or twenty-seven.
What about things like adding speed limit signs since we changed the speed limit? Or um continuing to have budget available for the slowdown on our streets signs that people are picking up from city clerk's office? Would those be something that we could continue to have available for some neighborhood streets?
Yeah, the signs at the city clerk, the slowdowns, for sure, those aren't very expensive, so we can still pay for those out of the budget. And then our signings, you know, kind of our signings, so I don't think that would have to change it either.
Okay. So I think that answers, I hopefully informs council as we're making decisions of a number of things that could be included within that. Um, Counselor Cruz and then Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. And I just wanted to clarify that any pause in the humps and in the neighborhood street kind of traffic calming deployment would, I get like, it would be, we would be doing the minor collectors instead, which we have not been doing.
I would refocus the money and the staff working on collectors.
Great. So it's not that we're not putting in traffic calming it, because I think that that could easily be interpreted that way. It's we're redirecting the focus of that is the proposal.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Sinks.
Yeah, and and to clarify also, if this pause goes into effect for humps, would the residents, uh, would the neighbors still have the ability to request the temporary radar signs or would that be included in a pause?
Uh, temporary radar signs would still be deployed.
Great. Mayor, can I suggest something?
Yes, please.
How how about if we do, how about if we come back and do an update in six months? Because there are a couple of programs like what uh Director DeAndrea talked about, maybe uh reconfiguring the the price share, for example. And um Community Resources, as Maria said, has a pretty good uh program that they utilize right now. So uh there are a couple of things that we can do that we can come back to city council in the next six months while still implementing the pause and focusing on the um the major, the collectors. Um, we can have some of these, this, as I've heard tonight, low hanging fruit kind of things and report back. So why don't we look at, make a commitment, say, end of May, that we can at least have an update to city council so it doesn't feel like this all just kind of got lost. Uh, we can also have this conversation then at your upcoming retreat, which will really help us in the context of all of council priorities to really determine. Um, tha- that's really, that's an important time for staff to hear how, what priorities um are more important than others from a a funding perspective. So how about if we kind of handle that a few, a few different ways and come back in six months with a written report?
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ryan.
I love that idea. Just to clarify, our pause, though, we're just keeping it at one year. Uh, no longer than one year, we can always remove that pause at any time. But for right now, what we would be, what you'd be asking for consensus on is that we put the pause on the local speed humps um for one year.
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Cruz.
I'm good.
Nothing. Okay, okay. So with that being said, um, we'll go ahead and let's see if we can get some council consensus. So the question is that for if for the next year to put a pause on um the humps that are installed within the neighborhood streets to focus those, focus the safety efforts on the minor collectors um as we're moving this through the Safe Streets for All, Vision Zero, and then we would be getting an update from staff on some of that process of reevaluating the hump process um in six process um in six months. Hopefully, I captured that correctly. Um any counsel low?
Minor minor clarification, it can it can it be focusing on the minor collectors? And to the extent there are things we can do also, some targeted major collectors?
I'm not going to get into that, those details that on that. I like that's too, that's too vague for staff. They're not going to know how to work with that. Um but I think that those are the kinds of things that we can talk about in retreat. We just need to get something concrete done so that we know what to start and what to what to pause. But I thank you very much for your your comments on that. Definitely, we want to prioritize that kind of our conversation in retreat. Um so with that being said, please go ahead and thumbs up if you are in support of that um pause and update. Oh, thank you. Counselor Furman, did you have yours? Uh did I miss? Okay. Ms. Hudson, you got them all? Perfect. Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. Um Mr. Whitaker, was that just the first step of more that we needed to talk about in that second conversation?
Um, there's maybe ten minutes more of stuff I will share. Um but as far as but as far as information, that's all I need.
Were there more? But did you need more from us now? Okay, good.
No.
All right.
The rest is more just informational. So some of the equipment we've been deploying, like everything in the world, is getting a lot smarter. So one of the things I um want to talk about is safety measures. And one of them is what we call post-encroachment time, is what the industry calls it for some reason. But it's basically the time between two objects occupy the same space. Um and so it kind of a lot of people talk about it as near-miss analysis. And so a lot of our devices now are giving us this. We started it on the COFAK Safety Project. And we now have it at several other devices. We've installed over twelve around the city. Um, sorry, the wrong way. And so it's collecting data, and most of this one's coming off of a device at Mississippi and Garrison. Um so it categorizes the near misses as critical. Like that time is really short between the two objects occupying the same space, high, medium, low. And it, you know, is counting twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, as long as the device is out there. These do come with uh software licensing. So as long as we pay for the software as a service, you know, we get access to the data. Um but it really starts to show us where we're getting critical, like at this one, you know, obviously, at the five o'clock hour, you have the most critical incidents, which is kind of what you would expect when congestion gets heavier. Uh drivers um and bike riders and pedestrians take smaller and smaller gaps because they're more frustrated. There's less, you know, com- comfortable gaps, and so they become a little more aggressive in what they'll take. Um but it also breaks it down by movements. And so here, the northbound left turn versus the southbound through has the most incidents. So it really starts to help us focus in on where we're seeing near misses and if there's something we can do um from an engineering standpoint or an operation standpoint to cut down on those uh near misses. Um while that northbound left has the most um total at times, um the westbound left, eastbound through actually has the most critical, which obviously, like most things, you you kind of focus on the critical ones first. And then the highs and and don't worry about the mediums, the lows quite as much. Um you also see it breaks it out by vehicle to vehicle, vehicle to bicycle, vehicle to pedestrian. And so it's really just pulling that data out um from those near misses and helping the engineers see what's going on and which movements are a problem. And to help us figure out ways to reduce those near misses, so everyone's safer. Um this is just a a plot by the the PET. Most people are saying if you're over two seconds of a PET, it's not too much of an issue. Um and so at this location, you know, somewhere around one point six and lower. We've got some 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 incidents happening, but not not very many of them, which is good. Um obviously, one of the things we're learning is uh the movement makes a difference as well. Obviously, if the near miss is somebody turning left in front of an oncoming car, it's a worse maneuver, even if it's the the exact same time as if somebody turns behind the pedestrian or the near miss car. Um it just means that they're um willing to to cut it closer, but it but it wasn't going to be a crash. Um where if you're turning in front of a car, it's it's more likely to be a crash. Um the second thing um to go and buy some of our um things that we might be able to concentrate on is setting up a program where we start doing um a decision support system for setting speed limits. Um in the past, you know, we a lot of times we use eighty-fifth percentile and some operating characteristics to set speed limits. Um the newer systems and the kind of the the way of the world, uh best practices is you start taking into all these other factors, you know, is it a residential area, is it a commercial area, is it an industrial area? How many driveways are there? How many intersections? How many um pedestrian crossings are there? Um what's your crash history? Um you know, are there adverse alignments? Is there parking? Are you going from one area type to another? All these go into the de- decision support software and come out with a much better um operating speed limit recommendation. And so we can start hitting some of the arterials is probably one of the first things we would try to look at. Um is like Alameda, just go from one end to the other in Lakewood and go through this analysis and compare what the systems are telling us we should be operating versus what they're currently posted. Um obviously, um one of the things that uh the police department is getting closer to doing is automatic vehicle identification systems or photo enforcement. Um you want to have a defensible way you're setting speed limits. Obviously, a de- decision support software pumping out the numbers you want to put out there um is probably the the least concerning to most people. Um if it's just an engineer saying, hey, I think this road should be forty miles an hour um without a lot of backup, um you're going to get a lot more uh backlash from the public, um especially once they start receiving tickets for those speed limits. And so another good reason to use them. Um this one kind of goes into a little bit of, I believe, everybody received Counselor Low and Cruz's letter. Um some initial responses to it. Um we have, and it goes to the overall thing. I think uh Counselor Low is totally correct in that we have done a very poor job of explaining what we do and how we've done it and what we've worked on, and that's something we need to get better at. So one of the things we have done um and we'll get it out of the SS4A project as well is one of the things we need to track is crashes. And so on our um traffic safety and tickets page on the website, we've added the Dr. Cog Regional Crash Database. And so you can go in there and search for different types of crashes, whether they're fatal, serious injuries, property damage, um pedestrian, bike, and see where they're happening around Lakewood. Um it was just an easy way. Uh Dr. Cog's already done the GIS. Um and so it was a way to get that information out um for the residents to be able to see. Public Works um also puts out an annual traffic safety report where we go through all the crashes every year, determine our highest locations for like arterial arterial crashes, arterial collector crashes, arterial local crashes, and all the different categories of intersections. And start looking at the top ten or fifteen at each category and start looking at ways we can address some of the issues we're seeing at those locations. Um even though the twenty twenty four is the latest published data, it was using data up through twenty twenty-three. There's usually a six to six month to sometimes a year, year and a half lag in the data coming from the state. Um they've been working hard on that, and so we just got up through June of twenty twenty-five, so right now we're only at about a six-month lag. Um because a lot of agencies around the state, obviously, are complaining about we want more current crash data, and they're working on it. Um as far as safe systems mindset, really, the COFAK Safety Project's a prime example. Uh Green Mountain Traffic Circle is a lot of you are familiar with. Um I will say that one of them was removed because the residents around it were not totally happy with it. And it created some other issues for them. Um so they're not always, you know, you put them in and they're they're widely accepted by the community. Um so we're still learning on those. Um I talked a little bit um about some of the signal operations we do. You've probably all experienced at some points. Um you're at a signal and there's nobody going, but you're still sitting there at a red light. And then you'll see the signal downstream will turn green, and then all of a sudden you get a green. Um so we've kind of made some choices that, you know, once we get people stopped, we'd rather keep you stopped than to let you go and then have to stop again at the next signal because that just creates another instance of somebody might not stop. And so your risk of a crash goes up a little bit. To talk about some of the uh designing for lower speeds, um you know, unfortunately, Lakewood isn't building a lot of roads. We're mostly in maintenance of our roads. Uh we're pretty much built out as a city. But we always get a lot of of things. Why aren't you doing other roads with with some of your quick builds? And why don't you just do it with the overlay? Taking off those paint stripes roughly are costing us about three dollars and twenty cents per square foot. Um putting down paints about ninety cents uh paint, so we can do roughly four times the street if we just do them with overlay. Then if we did one street where we had to grind it off and put down new stripes. So it just gets our our limited resources, our budget, to go further. Um obviously, as we get pushed harder and harder to to do more faster, um we'll have to take on some of those additional costs. Um we already talked about working on uh focusing staff and money on the roads with the higher crash rates. Um on the Vamos Bike Plan, uh now does have low-stress routes identified. We're currently developing some signing for those in the bike plan. Um and so that's one of the ideas we have for twenty twenty-six with some of our bike plan funding is to to publicize and and prioritize those low-stress bike routes and get them signed and put some markings out on them, um to make them a little more obvious. Um I will admit that right now we're working through some issues with bike streets where they have some different routes than we do in the bike plan that was just published. And so the two, the two systems don't exactly agree. And so uh we've been working with Avi a little bit on on trying to get some input and and try to get to recommending the same streets. Um and then most of you saw the resident survey. Um the thing we took about it from, you know, the next two-year focus, residents were saying, you know, their third highest concern was improving infrastructure and connectivity. Um reducing traffic congestion was sixth, and investing bike pedestrian section was eighth. So those are kind of the three things that jumped out at us in Public Works. From a long list. One of the other issues was noise. Um so one thing you'll start seeing this week is uh we're putting out some uh ALPRs um as a demo project at fifteen locations. Um but basically, they're putting in uh it's kind of a smart hub where you can add all kinds of different sensors to it. And one of them is noise. Uh microphone measuring. And so it might be an idea that um we can test um working with the company to to get a noise sensor in the one at Mississippi and Wadsworth. And just to get some experience with it and how well is it, you know, pick up noise from different vehicles and, you know, how how useful is it or not? Um but it's a a smart city hub that we can uh do some other sensors in it that will do us. Uh we already talked about the radar boards, you know, we do before and after. Um talked a little bit about drainage as an issue whenever we do vertical components and curb roadways. Uh we don't like uh ponds or icing issues. Um so that drives our costs up. And another in- uh interesting uh item in there was the Transportation Advisory Group. Um yeah, I think Lakewood's got to the point um that that would be a really good idea. I had I thought it would go with the transportation plan effort. Um that's currently uh still unfunded. Um it could expand other roles, so maybe that'll have to tweak. Maybe we start the Transportation Advisory Group um before we have a transportation planning effort uh to work on. And with that, that was the last of the information piece. Thank you.
So like for that one, you don't need any additional votes for us? Are we ready to move on to item number five?
We are.
All right, so we will go ahead and usher in then item number five. I apologize, I do not have my script in front of me. Um Director DeAndrea, DeAndrea, do you do you want to kick us off there? Or Mr. Whitaker, I'm not sure who needs to be my speaker.
No, yep, it's it'll be me.
Okay.
May I just one second?
All right, yours.
Call up the presentation, please.
Yeah.
There we go. Sorry about the delay. Good evening. Um so I will be speaking to um just giving an update and then asking for some direction on how we prioritize new sidewalks to be built. I think this was a good discussion so far uh tonight, talking about traffic safety. And another element of that is not only vehicle crashes, but the safety of pedestrians, bicyclists, and basically all the other users within the public rights away. So as we know, um it's not just always able-bodied folks who are using the sidewalk network. We want to encourage people to walk around, um use our bikes or use our bike paths, use our sidewalks. Uh not only to access businesses, schools, whatever, but also to promote a healthy lifestyle and reduce hopefully vehicle usage and thus their and thus um reduce gas emissions, all of those benefits that go along. So having a safe and accessible sidewalk and path network is very important for any city. So our intent really is to talk about how do we go about prioritizing those segments? And what are our current funding options and maybe some alternatives to uh making these priorities a little bit more focused on where are those critical segments that we want to um look at? And how do we judiciously assign those limited dollars so that we're building the most critical segments first? So there is alignment with our comprehensive plan that was recently adopted. Specifically, there's three goals that that speak to sidewalk construction. Um specifically providing a complete walkable neighborhood. So again, in focusing on all users, not just um people who might be walking, but also those in wheelchairs, on bikes, children, all all ages really, and of abilities. Then focused on, again, that having that multimodal system where all users are able to use the system and are um can access it. And then it's safe and connected. So the real key there in that goal twenty-two is that connected. What we see a lot because of the way that the city developed is that there's certain gaps. So for whatever reason, um either various developments weren't required to put in sidewalks, or they haven't really been redeveloped so that, or the city hasn't gone in and built those sections. So we might have good segments all along, and we'll see some photos of that in a little while here. And then as you've all probably experienced, you come up to a And then as you've all probably experienced, you come up to a certain property and it just ends. Or, you know, now you're walking on the side of the onto the road because there is no safe network for you to use. So that connection is really key there. Right now, we do not have a complete inventory of all of our sidewalk network. Based on just what we know so far, we estimate that we have roughly 840 miles of sidewalks and shared use paths throughout the city. We are working this year with the IT group to get a more comprehensive map and inventory, but right now we don't know exactly how much our existing system is. Then we also have, what are those missing segments? And so we talk about that in terms of gaps. So right now, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. A couple of years ago, the Lakewood Advisory Commission went through an effort and did a fairly extensive outreach to the community, asking for, hey, where do you see that we need a sidewalk? Where do you see needed improvements? And based on those requests, we came up with about another 70 miles of where sidewalks or paths are needed. But we also know that that wasn't comprehensive, that there were other segments that not somebody just didn't necessarily call that one in or add it to the map. And we estimate that that's another 140 miles. And so, and that's not considering every single local street. That's primarily those again, arterials and collector streets where we know that we have higher volumes, but we still have significant gaps in the system. So those gaps overall between based on the requests and those others are, we roughly estimate that to be about 210 miles. And so in a future scenario, if we were to build all that out, we would have roughly just over 1,000 miles of sidewalk within the city. It's also important to focus on maintenance. So while we, if I go back there for, we've got 840 miles that we have to maintain. We're putting in roughly just around $800,000 a year to maintain our system. But of course, as we add more, that need goes up higher. Also, there's probably an additional level of maintenance that's needed in order to, because as any type of infrastructure ages, we're going to see more cracking, more deterioration. And so because the system is just aging overall, we're going to need to put more money into maintaining our existing system. Similarly, we as a community need to comply with the American with Disabilities Act. And these photos, these are from Lakewood, just driving around. The sidewalk on the left, which is very common in local streets, we've all seen these. This is what we call an attached curb and gutter with the sidewalk. This from the very edge, the flat surface, if you will, that's the sidewalk component, measures 27 inches. The minimum requirement for ADA is 48 inches or four feet, preferably five feet. And so it's more than a foot off if you are too narrow to be considered compliant for ADA. So we have, you know, quite a few of these. Another example here in these next two photos is driveway connections. So you can see that in this attached curve, both in the middle photo and to the right, that driveway has been poured so that it dips down to match the street. Imagine if you're walking along the sidewalk, all of a sudden you're you're dipping down yourself to match that grade. And what these need to do is actually stay at the level of the rest of the sidewalk so that a vehicle pulling out has to go essentially down over the sidewalk down into the street. So these are situations where we need to modify our driveway policies when somebody pours a new driveway. Or if we're going back for some reason and retrofitting this, that we would raise those up to make them again ADA compliant. Similarly, the city is undertaking right now an evaluation of all the ADA pedestrian ramps that are located at the corners. And you can see here just a couple of examples where just by looking at them, I can tell that these are noncompliant. The one on the left, while it's got detectable surface, it doesn't have an area behind it where wheelchair can land. The middle one, you know, doesn't have the compliant detection bumps on it. The grades are are wrong. And then the third one just has a whole lot of issues going on with it. So again, you see a lot of these examples all around town where we know that we're going to have to put more into upgrading these. As we go around, we're doing fair number each year, but we will likely need to increase that in order to keep up with the needs within the within the overall system. So one of the recommendations that we're making tonight is that while we do we do complete annual maintenance to go about and fixing trip hazards, replacing some of those pad ramps every year, we want to basically we align that with our annual pavement maintenance program. So if we're milling and overlaying a street, those are the ramps that we're looking at to upgrade and replace. We're not necessarily going out and looking for other trip hazards unless they're called in from the public. So we are recommending taking more of a proactive approach where we cut divide the city up into six or eight areas in that we're going out, looking at all the sidewalks within that one area each year and prioritizing those whether it's the ramps and or the sidewalk repair areas so that we can get out ahead of it and be more proactive as opposed to just waiting either for the public to call those in or for us to find them as we go about and do our milling overlay. So then transitioning to building new sidewalks, moving away from maintenance. You can see here in the photo, this is just an aerial view of the new sidewalk that's being built as part of the Wadsworth and Morrison interchange or intersection project. And this is a summary of all the sidewalks and or paths that we constructed over the last several years. So as you might remember, we have, if we estimated at about 210 miles of missing sidewalks over the last seven to eight or going into the future here over the seven year period, eight year period, we're only building about a mile per year. So 210 miles, it's going to take us a while to get there. So again, speaks to the need to really prioritize where is the most critical to put our limited dollars. So touching again on what Lakewood Advisory Committee did. They utilized the Lakewood Together platform again to solicit input from the public on where there were either missing or inadequate sidewalks, shared use paths and trails. And they evaluated that against criteria and created a list of 319 projects. So that was kind of the basis for what staff has used since then. Not necessarily in order from the highest priority to the lowest, but instead kind of aligning that with other factors such as where we were able to find grants. Working with other nearby projects, for example, if we were replacing a traffic signal, we would want to do potentially some of the sidewalk around there, but really not in a systematic fashion. These were some of the criteria that they use to prioritize those streets. So street classification, things like how close you were to a school or a transit stop. So if you were within 1,500 feet of a school, you got certain points. Recreation centers, parks, that sort of thing. Also, whether or not right of way was available. And whether how easy it might be to construct a road. And then if there was alignment with either the bicycle master plan or other city plans. And then things like if there was the potential, if it was, let's say, a vacant site, we knew that that in the future that might be redeveloped. So that was not then prioritized as high because there was a private developer that might come in to build that sidewalk in the future. What staff is recommending at this point is that we would modify those slightly to help us give more of a prioritized list by increasing the points for segments that are near schools. Again, focusing on allowing children especially to have a safe accessible network to and from school, encouraging them to walk as opposed to being driven. And then also increasing points for regional arterials, arterials and major collector roadways. So again, speaking to the previous two presentations, the number the number of crashes for those vulnerable road users are highest on those higher volume streets. And so really aligning it with that data that's coming back in terms of where the crash is occurring and trying to focus and build and prioritize, if you will, the the missing segments along those more highly or highly traveled roadways. Then we're also introducing from Dr. Cog, they've recently come out with what's called an equity index score. So they've looked at each of the census tracts and given that a score based on various factors and we're also incorporating that into this evaluation criteria to identify where there are either low income populations or other factors that might warrant having additional sidewalk nearby potentially. So if you're, if there is a low income area, that's one of the elements of that equity index is that you may have less opportunity or less access to a vehicle. And therefore, a good sidewalk network becomes even more critical or having access to transit because you don't have other alternate methods of transportation. Another option might be is to reduce that proximate distance from 1,500, so about a quarter of a mile down to about an eighth of a mile. So currently, as I mentioned previously, things like being near parks or being near a recreation center was set at 1,500 feet. So we could go smaller. And again, kind of prioritize those that are the closest to those various activity generators. This is just a map showing those that was that Dr. Cog equity score. So you can see the darker the score, the more points it receives. So the higher basically that score becomes for the equity index. You can see the rough boundaries there for those various areas. And then this is just a snapshot. These were included as attachments in in the packet. But we showed here in red, all of those requested segments. So again, we have not done an inventory yet to look at where everything is missing, but these were based on those requests so far. And the red shows those that are not constructed. The yellows have been constructed and the blue or excuse me, the blue have been constructed and then the yellows are either in design or soon to be constructed. So we're making some headway. Especially, for example, here right in kind of the middle of the of the map, you see the work occurring that has occurred so far by C dot at US six and Wads. But still quite a bit of red on the map in all segments of the city. Then transitioning into our funding. So our current funding comes from a variety of sources. So staff has done a great job of identifying alternative funding sources beyond just the city funds. So looking at grants specifically, either through Safe Routes to School, through Dr. Cog's Transportation Improvement Program, as well as potentially using community development block grant funds to build sidewalks. We also obviously work closely with our development community and have requirements around new sidewalks when a site redevelops. So all of those funds beyond just Tabor, which there is a portion set aside for walks as well as our capital improvement funds goes into potential funds for new sidewalk gaps. These are the ones that are kind of in the current pipeline. This graphic or this spreadsheet shows this. So right now we're working on two segments of a new sidewalk along Wadsworth Boulevard. And we were able to secure a grant for that with the match coming from Tabor funds. Similarly, a new sidewalk on Sheridan Boulevard between Jewel and Florida was coming primarily from a federal grant with the matching amount coming from Tabor. The new Safe Routes to School grant, we talked about a few meetings ago, going up to Stober Elementary. And then, of course, the new sidewalks or wider sidewalks that we're adding as part of the Colfax Safety Project. So that dollar amount doesn't necessarily account just for the sidewalks, but it is a big portion of that project overall. And then other bikeways or other bike paths and sidewalks, we the 5.6 million is a lot of that is carryover. So as we build out those segments that I identified previously for 2026 and 2027, that's really allocated for that. And then going forward, there's just about a million dollars per year coming from either the CIF or Tabor that is going towards sidewalks. So these are really what we have on the books right now. And then going out into the future, it's only about a million dollars per year, which we've seen doesn't get us too far. That is dedicated right now for sidewalk construction. Based on some of the costs of our recent projects, we've estimated that on a per lineal foot and it can vary significantly. But it would take between one and a half to just over $3 million per mile of new sidewalk. And that does not even include the purchase of needed properties. You can see in this example to the left there, that photo, that the chain link fence is probably set at the right of way line. So when we build these types of projects, we're dealing with utility pole relocation, that that power pole that's right there. This green box is probably some sort of communication and potentially having to move this fence back and purchase property from that property owner in order to get all that sidewalk elements in there. So the total cost, if we were to build out again, that 210 miles is anywhere from 330 million to over nearly $700 million. And then these are just a few more photos from around the city that just shows why it's so expensive. You know, it's not just throwing down some concrete, it's dealing with all the drainage issues, it's dealing with those either underground utilities or those other things, those other factors that we need to deal with at the same time. So that picture on the left shows a deep ditch. So where does that water go? We can't just build a sidewalk over it. We have to channel that drainage, most likely put in that in a series of pipes, get that water to an existing storm sewer network or inlet at some point. And so all that piping costs a lot of money besides just putting in the sidewalk on top of it. The middle photo shows again, power poles that would likely need to be removed or relocated back so that there's room for the sidewalk. And then the far right picture just shows other things in the right of ways. So you can see that small retaining wall. Most likely whether that's in the right of way or not, it's probably right on the edge. And so we're having to correct all those things as we go in and build that new sidewalk. Similarly, again, here's some more photos. On the left, we see the drainage where a sidewalk just ends. And you're walking over a grate. So most likely we're going to, we would have to move that grate, move the storm sewer underneath it to make that connection. Again, a power pole in the middle there, right behind the existing pad ramp. And then on the far right, this is actually along Kipling Avenue. And just there's some adjacent development going on, but all of this dirt is piled in the right of way. And it makes it very, very difficult, as you can imagine, to access this bus stop, which is right there. And people having to traverse over this. Clearing all this out, making this flat, making this drain appropriately just takes a lot of money and and which just drives up those costs, which makes them so high. So our recommendations, we do have several at this point. We would recommend conducting a comprehensive inventory of all those missing and substandard walks on the major roadways. So again, not on local roads, but instead focused on those regional arterials like Kipling, Wadsworth, arterial roadways like Colfax and Alameda. And then any of those major collectors, things like Harlan, Pierce, those types of streets and really see how much are we are we missing just on those roadways themselves? If we were to do that and then go through based on your feedback tonight, modify those evaluation criteria and see what we come up with. So getting a complete inventory, updating or modifying those criteria potentially. And then really seeing what that prioritized list looks like. And so then we would also recommend updating our design standards so that as new development comes in, we're being consistent with what we we build as well as what we're requiring our development community to build for us in certain segments. And then similar to that or in addition to that, looking at how we what we require in terms of not only design standards, but also in terms of costs for new development and what we would require of them. We would obviously continue to seek grant funds and really look for new opportunities if those become available. And as I mentioned, sort of at the beginning of the presentation, implement that proactive sidewalk inspection program. Likely beginning this year. So with that, we'd be open to questions and discussion to talk more around this and get your feedback on some of those points, specifically if there's interest in modifying those evaluation criteria. Or if there's any other ideas in terms of reallocating funds, potentially to put more towards sidewalk construction and or potentially looking at additional fees or other programs where we could look to get additional funds. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. That's really eye opening. You just don't realize, you know, as a common layperson, how challenging some of these areas could be to to add sidewalks to. I know you guys need some feedback from us, so we'll we'll get there. But before we do try to put together that feedback, Council, do we have any questions? Before we start to try to vote on things, Counselor Ryan and then Counselor LeBier.
Thank you for the present presentation. And I'm actually was very excited to hear it because it was the last project I worked on when I was on the LAC and your the staff, I know it was prior to you, was very helpful in helping us come up with some of those factors. So I'm delighted to see that this is still a tool that the city finds useful and that it's being updated. You know, one of the things on the tool that in its original incarnation, if you will, was not only sidewalks, but also trails and bike paths where there's broken connections, frankly, is what is trying to address is is what we're talking about tonight, addressing anything about those other aspects that aren't sidewalks.
Somewhat, definitely, I'm using the term shared use path and bike or sidewalk interchangeably. Trails, you know, within parks were not part of this effort, but there were trails that were identified within that list from LAC.
So I I love the addition of the equity aspect of it. That was one of the things that we weren't able to find a an objective tool to be able to provide to you guys. So I'm glad that Dr. Cog has come, once again, saved the day and helped us with that. I guess the one thing I would say on the the priority of of the sidewalks that I didn't see is, and I don't know how you implement this is what I hate to be doing is just to be looking at it strictly by the numbers and not looking at it from a larger viewpoint, right? So for example, if there's if there's a gap of several hundred feet that if we were able to put in, all of a sudden you have connections all over a neighborhood that you wouldn't otherwise have. Instead of having to walk over Green Mountain, for example, right? And that's not practical for a lot of people. You know, it's I'd love to see some flexibility in being able to look at that larger viewpoint instead of just looking at it by the numbers. And it sounds like that's what you guys are doing. You're not going strictly by, well, here's here's our highest priority one according to the numbers. So we gotta do this one. So I I applaud that. Is there has has staff identified other sources of funding? Have have they talked about whether it makes sense to issue bonds for something like this? And what what are some of the discussions on the additional funding?
Yes, I think that's certainly, you know, part of that discussion for if there was a desire by council to do a larger bond issuance focused on you know, sidewalks is something that a lot of people want. I think we saw that in the resident survey. You know, I think that's that's a very viable consideration to make this one or, you know, one of the elements that would be eligible for a bond issue. Many of you may be familiar too with what Denver has recently done to add a additional fee for sidewalk sidewalk maintenance specifically. Now, could that be extended to or modified perhaps to do for new sidewalk construction? We could certainly investigate that as well. So that was on top of fee or other taxes within the city and county Denver, where they had such an outcry from the public that they and they really didn't have another funding source for sidewalk maintenance. And so they implemented that. And so those are some other options that we've certainly kicked around as well.
And just two very quick comments. The first is, I would hope that you'd have community input on some of the larger pieces because we heard in a different context that some folks actually don't want sidewalks in their neighborhood. And whether that's a smart thing or not, you know, we don't always have to listen to the folks because they may be wrong for safety issues. But I think we should at least include that as part of our when we're counting the numbers. And then last, thank you very much for getting that sidewalk in place, connecting the two trailheads on Green Mountain. That was a crazy safety issue, seeing the kids running across the busy Alameda. And and we saw some of the things that we heard about tonight where you have a pedestrian waiting area midway through as well. So thank you for doing that because that's always been a scary area. Thanks.
Counselor LeBier.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to just make a comment. I wanted to thank the director for the presentation. Thought it was a great presentation. It's great to see all the need in the community and all the kind of different challenges that we face to actually, you know, put this kind of infrastructure, actually, you know, get it, uh, get it on the ground and moving. And so I just wanted to thank you for that. I really appreciate the discussion about about the costs and and what kind of investment would actually look like to make a a major impact regarding infrastructure, regarding sidewalks. And I think we should follow up with additional additional conversation about, you know, what those kind of investments could or would need to look like or fees or or, you know, whatever it would take to kind of move the ball forward on this kind of, you know, on it, on expanding our infrastructure network. And and we've had some of these discussions before that, you know, the first time we did taper. I was a part of those discussions and, you know, believe it or not, it was actually it kind of went back and forth on whether or not we should have sidewalks in part of the discussion or not. That was one of the sticking points. We ended up landing with, yeah, let's do it. And I'm glad we did, because I think that's helped get a lot of great community assets around around the city. But of course, we could definitely do more and we should. So I'd love to just kind of follow up with with you all about, you know, how we move things forward. And just want to thank you for bringing that point up because, you know, we've had multiple conversations about prioritization and how we should rewrite the prioritization. And I think that's an important discussion. But obviously, if you're building maybe a mile or so a year, you know, you can only prioritize so much. Regardless. So I think it's great to have the broader conversation. So I just want to thank you for that.
Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. I want to echo the gratitude for the presentation and for highlighting both like the scale of the issue. I think it's just really helpful for us to also understand in the current conditions what it would take to deliver on all of the connection, missing connections that we know about. Because I think it helps us kind of generate that conversation of how do we move to fund that and what are residents interested in. So I really appreciate that work and also the different challenges around constructing them. So I guess I'll say maybe some of my thoughts on prioritization if I'm hearing kind of the mayor's for later, but I just have a couple of questions. I was curious in the in the waiting by school age, kind of what some of the rationale was for sort of higher weights for younger schools. What is it a thought that there's more pedestrian activity and as kids are younger or I was just sort of curious about that.
Yeah, I think, oh, excuse me. Yes, I think because younger children have less ability to gauge, you know, how fast vehicles are going when they're crossing a street, providing a safer network and given the fact that we have so little. You know, we like, as you mentioned, just about a mile per year, so that we're trying to prioritize around elementary schools. Because they are even more vulnerable, maybe than like a high school aged child who can discern where traffic is, who can get out of the the right away if they need to, probably more easily than an elementary school child.
Okay, that's helpful. I would I would love to understand. I'm not, this is just anecdotally. I feel like I know, at least in my neighborhood, a lot more like middle school and high school kids that actually walk to school, whereas a lot more young kids are dropped off very directly at school. And so just want to make sure that we're taking that into consideration with the ways that we're waiting, not that that's like the biggest impact, but was just something that I was curious about.
That's a valid point. Yeah, because I would agree with that, that yeah, the older children are the ones that are more likely walking.
Yeah. So just put this out on that. And then would love to also understand and appreciate your clarification to that when you're talking about sidewalks and thinking about shared use paths. And I feel like sometimes for, I'm just thinking of particular streets like twenty six, et cetera, where there have been conversations about sidewalks. There's still kind of a very separate. This is the bike lane. This is the sidewalk conversation when we're working with limited space. And so sort of just curious your perspective on as we're thinking about using limited resources in both connected conversations, like what the path and some of these areas in which we have maybe limited space and resources about continuing to combine some of the efforts on that.
Yeah, and I think now that we have, I think what, you know, what's what's evolved since four or so years ago is the updated bikeway plan. And so I think looking back at that and seeing almost on a case by case basis, because that was that was comprehensive and to the previous discussion about kind of looking at the network kind of viewpoint, you know, does it make sense to look at shared use path versus sidewalk and almost reevaluating that to some extent based on the bikeway plan update.
Great. I think that that's really worthwhile, just because I think a lot, a lot of times we think about those spaces as separate and in so many transportation contexts, it like makes a lot of sense for those uses to be combined and feel safer for bikers too. And then I guess the other question I had was related to the funding conversation. I mean, I think particularly in my role as budget and audit board chair, like would love to have all those conversations and all know all of the things that could be on the table. Something I found that was really interesting and sort of the vibrant Denver bond package that just passed was like thinking about like very localized improvements that were not only just like a here's first, here's the sidewalk, here's the traffic. It was like, I think part of what was helpful for them was like the vision of some of the mobility, combined mobility strategies. And so I'm just sort of curious what y'all's thoughts are on some some of that, sort of like combined place making, combined safety measure moving forward.
Absolutely. I think that's, you know, based on again, the the two presentations we talked about earlier, you know, it's it's not just about sidewalks. It's also about being able to cross a street safely. So whether that's, you know, at a signalized crossing or with some other device like a one of the rapid flashing beacons or the hawk signal, it's all part of a network to get from A to B. And so I think we have to look at our bikeways, our our bike plan, the efforts that are coming out of the out of this Vision Zero safety plan that we talked about earlier and really look at maybe more comprehensive projects than just like, oh, we're going to build this one segment over here and then we're going to do something over here. Really look at that and almost overlay them on a map together to see where we get that most bang for the buck.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Black.
Yeah, thanks so much. This has been really informative. I already feel like I'm learning so much and I have just a couple of quick things. First, I love that you're taking a proactive approach to kind of looking at all of the sidewalks and the ways that people access through ADA. It feels so much more equitable to me than having our residents have to reach out to us for that information and that work to be done. So I really like that approach. And the one question I had is, do we have statistics on how humans are actually using our streets from pedestrian access? Because the one thing that I would say, and in reading the comments on Lakewood Speaks Speaks as well, there was some hesitancy around using regional arterial and collector roadways as one of the criteria. Because it does feel very car focused versus very like human and pedestrian focused. We're kind of taking these roadways that are primarily used for cars and we're using that as a major sort of indicator about where we want to put pedestrian access when in fact we know that folks primarily kind of want to be off major roadways or for instance, taking local transit directly to local businesses and things like that. So I'm just curious how that impact might play into it and the ways in which we prioritize for this specific program. The ways that humans use our streets versus the way that cars use our streets.
Yeah, unfortunately, we do not have a lot of pedestrian data. You know, especially for traveling down, let's say, a particular street segment. We do collect now, when we do like, say, traffic counts at an intersection, we can get pedestrian counts in which way they're crossing. But we don't really have, let's say, a way or a means to measure how many people might be walking down a particular street from a pedestrian. The way that we can count cars, we don't have a method to to count pedestrians or bicyclists.
Okay, that's good information to know. Then in that case, I might encourage us as a group, as a body to maybe put pedestrian access above regional arterial and major collector roadways as a priority, particularly pedestrian access around transit, local business and parks. I've seen recent statistics showing that, for instance, there's a thirty percent increase to local businesses when there is increased pedestrian access to those areas because people that are moving slower have a better opportunity to look at and see local businesses. So I know that is more difficult because it's clearly more difficult to get accurate counts on. We don't have a lot of data around it, but I do think it's an important piece of the discussion around something that is pedestrian focused.
Certainly, yeah. I think the other element to that is that you know, with higher speeds on those higher roadway or on those larger roadways, the the potential impact on a pedestrian is greater than to be perhaps if you did get into a crash on a local street, if they're traveling twenty five miles per hour, there's a less likelihood of a fatal or more serious injury than you would, let's say, on as you, if you were walking along Kipling with a car going forty five miles per hour. So that was some of the rationale there.
Definitely. And thank you for that clarification.
All right, with that, Dr. Doctor Director DeAndrea, will you guide us on, like, I guess, let's maybe tackle first the modifying the evaluation criteria?
Yeah, so I think heard a few, a bit of a feedback from a couple of the council members so far. But I think, you know, increasing the points for segments near schools, not only increasing them, but should we give priority maybe to high school and middle school versus elementary? I think that's a a good point to consider, maybe flipping that on what I was originally laid out in the council memo. Then also, should we give additional points based on those those tiers of roadways? Or again, looking at maybe those that in a different way. Think there's some positive feedback on including that equity index score from Dr. Cog. And then if there is an interest and when we, if you saw that list, there there's a lot of them bunched up between, let's say, between twenty eight and twenty four points. And so how do we start to differentiate those potentially to to a greater degree? One of those might be is to look at if they're closer and again, reducing that proximate distance. So if you're closer to a park, you get more points than if you're a quarter mile away. You get more points than if you're a quarter mile away. So a lot of those segments that were on the list are within. A quarter mile of a park. So everybody gets, or all the segments get three points. Is there a way to differentiate? If you're near a park, like the closer you get, or if it's a small segment. Um, you know, do you get per- perhaps more points than a long segment like a long twenty sixth avenue where we've got to build? You know, a mile and a half. So is it um, things like that. I'd be interested in your feedback.
Okay, thank you. Um, can you remind me or maybe was it said and I missed it, the. Near schools. We're talking about a set addition of points, but right now. It's favoring elementary, like we're not talking about schools in general, cuz this just says schools in general.
It is. So that um, as council, council member Cruz mentioned, there were more points. Assigned to elementary schools and rather than, let's say, a high school. So I believe it was. Three, two and one, and we were increasing those to five. I'll find my detail, but basically increasing them. So elementary is still, that gets more points than high school.
Okay, um, Counsel Cruz and Counsel Furman, did you have a com- a comment on this or a question on this particular one? Counsel Cruz, was your comment or question on this particular one?
I, I'm, I'm just ready to express my preferences, but wh- whenever you want me to do that, just let me know.
Okay, um, but I'm just trying to figure out where we, how we wanna like. Focus on landing the plane. Counsel Furman, was it on the modifying criteria?
Uh, yeah, it's purely on the school piece.
Okay, and that Council Nystrom, same thing? Okay, so we'll go Counsel Cruz, Furman, and then Nystrom.
Great. Yeah, I, I would just say that particularly, I also appreciated the inclusion of university college. I think that that's also a population where there. Folks are, are walking uh, quite a bit around there. So to me, like making sure that we're precise, but I. I do generally support, um, you know, increasing prioritization for schools. Um. I'll leave it there, although, cuz I do think that there are some other um, modification of prioritization criteria points that are important to take into.
Okay, let's start, um, well, Counsel Furman, Counsel Nystrom, go ahead and go and then. We're, we, we need, we do need to kind of figure out how to land this and we have a lot of decision points that we need to potentially address. So. Um, let's, if I can, maybe just a minute or two, you guys each one, say what you're, what you're thinking and then I have an idea on how we start this. So Counsel Furman, the floor is yours.
Right, I'll be super fast. Um, while I a hundred percent agree that it's more likely middle school and high school kids. Are walking to school. Um, it is worth noting the. I mean, the, the uh, school districts um, not having busing and people being within the walkable area. It, it's, I mean, I, I'm, I recognize the need to prioritize elementary only because of. If you are not in that, if you are not further than a mile away, you are gonna be required to walk or be. Dropped off. Um, whereas the middle school, I think it's two miles and the high school like two and a half. So there is already a prioritization. On when they get busing. So I, I mean, I don't disagree with the assessment. But I, I think there's a couple of different priorities going on here as you take into account busing. So that was it. Thank you.
Counsel Nystrom.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to ask or just bear in mind, um, you know, and you and I have talked about a couple of places where sidewalks don't exist. And haven't ever been there. Um, and one of them is very close to. Um, a group of medical offices and there's people trying to get there that have disabilities and there's no sidewalk present. Have, has that been factored in? You know, because we, we do have people with disabilities in our community that. Need access to sidewalks um, as well and, and I'm not sure if that's considered in here.
It is. So it was part of the um, LAC. Uh, or the original criteria and it was, those are captured under activity center. Slash commercial center slash employment center. And they receive two, two points if you're within that just. That fifteen hundred feet of something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Ryan.
Do you need us to really give you the point numbers for each of the different criteria as opposed to just giving you the go ahead? To come up with the revised priori, you know, way to determine the priorities to include all these different factors that you've. You've brought in. I, I'd hate for us to be sitting here tonight to try and say. Well, you get two points for a bus stop and so should, how does that equate to an elementary school versus a high school versus a commercial? We could be here all night if we were trying to figure out the actual number of points and I, I for one would say. I, I'm comfortable with letting you have your, run their discretion to come back to us with something. Maybe we'll tinker with the final plan, but. I'd love for you to kind of work through the numbers.
Certainly, thank you for that. Yeah, I, I don't think um, we're looking for specific feedback, like give five points for this. I think. In general, you know, are, is council interested in giving additional points for segments near schools? Is council interested in upping those more higher volume roadways? So that they start to filter out to the top as opposed to those, yeah, individual um, focused on those individual scores. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. So um, let's, I'm hearing slightly different uh, opinions. On prioritizing elementary over middle, over whatever. So let's start in general. Do we at least have consensus on increasing points for segments near schools? All encompassing schools.
Um, excuse me, can you stop uh, sharing the screen, please, so we can look at votes?
Thank you. Okay, so we, we have yes on schools and would. Does anyone have a firm preference on doing something other than giving the elementary schools? Additional points. Do we want to bring that forward to maybe flip that around from original recommendation? Okay, so everybody's feeling happy with the way that it's been stated now. Counsel Cruz.
Yeah, I, I personally just still don't feel convinced that waiting elementary schools over other types of schools. Um, matches like the movement patterns around those schools and so um. I'm, I'm pro waiting schools. I, I don't need to litigate like what you all do with, within those, but. Um, would love to just think about not only like what's the reaction to some of the kids, but like how does that actually impact like people's ability? To, to you, to get to school in the ways that they are already doing, which to me would indicate a different direction, but would love for that to be. Driven by evidence.
I can just, you know, my own personal experience having a, being a mother through several years of elementary school. And we actually live right down the street from an elementary school. And it is, you know, thirty minutes before and after you get little tiny heads bopping around all over the place. Um, especially we are, well, I don't know, I guess a lot of, all the schools I'm thinking of through Lakewood, like it, it's in a, in a neighborhood. So you do get. A lot of little heads. So as a mother, I would definitely support whatever is brought forward in that modification. Of if we feel like elementary is, is where it is. Um, I've seen a lot of elementary. And it, it tended in my experience, again, it, it wasn't, it's just different when you get the little kids and we've all seen a five year old soccer game, right? They kind of go all over the place. As we get a little older, we know where the lines are and we know where to be. So. Um, definitely will say elementary does have a need, um, but I could not quantitatively say anything with regards to numbers. Um, Counsel Low and then Counsel Black.
It just on, I mean, I think we're all aligned that, that schools should be a plus factor, but on, on the specific question of do you prioritize elementary schools? Or do you prioritize all schools? It, it just feels like we could, we could use a little bit more data. So maybe on that, we say yes, plus schools. But it maybe if we're gonna prioritize beyond that, like, I mean, I think we're all very persuadable. If public works comes back and says, here's data that shows that like, there, there in fact is a, is a database. Reason to prioritize sidewalks in elementary schools versus middle or high schools, but um. I, I, I kind of feel like that, that is my sense of where council was from this discussion.
Counsel Black.
Yeah, I just in full agreement with Counsel Cruz and Counsel Low on this, that the prioritization of schools, there either needs to be more data around it or we just. Prioritize schools since they're places where pedestrian activity occurs regularly.
Perfect. Um, Director DeAndrea, the next one?
Yes, then the next one was the major roadways. Giving additional points if they were al- along major roadways.
Okay, everybody um, thumbs up or thumbs down how you feel on adding points to those that are around. Major roadways. So six yes, five no. Um, the next one was that the Dr. Cog equity index score?
Yes.
Okay, Counsel Cruz.
Thanks. I think it, it is worth like having a little bit more discussion from my perspective on the major versus, that's like a really large weighting of points. Um, and so I, I just want to clarify, like in my response. Of no in general, I think like the huge rating of arterials to me doesn't make sense with how people move. If we're talking about collectors like major and minor collectors, I think that those do align with where residents have identified large gaps. More so than like a Wadsworth or other streets where sure, folks are going faster, but like you're not. Gonna walk on that unless you really have to because it's loud, it's scary. Um, and, and I think that there are other ways that we could use. Our resources and in ways that um, make more of an impact on people actually starting to walk places. So. Well, I, I personally think that that's a very important point of discussion on this prioritization sheet.
Yeah, so maybe not quite as many. So like we bumped up uh, regional arterial streets to nine points. So, which is quite a bit. Um, so maybe flattening that out a little bit so that there's not quite as much emphasis on. You know, or that, and it goes down to one for local streets. So maybe making that a little bit more even for. Um, we still give priority to like arterials and collectors, but it's a little bit flatter as opposed to having quite that swing. Um, from high to low. Perhaps.
Counsel Black.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Counselor Cruz there as well. I was surprised to see that it was weighted as, as nine, I think, in the index. I think it was the highest weight. And to me also, it just, again, I could restate what I already said, but it's almost utilizing. Car traffic to prioritize the way people move and that just seemed um, perhaps a bit off.
Okay, so then we already voted on it, but let's go ahead and. We can revise, maybe vote where we're still increasing it, but we're not increasing it to the same extent. That of the nine, the nine points. So maybe cutting that down in um, to half. I guess that would be four, four and a half. You probably need even numbers. So. Let's go five points, four points. Let's start with four points. Four points added to the, the collector's streets. Please thumbs up if you're in support, thumbs up down if you're not on that one.
Sorry, point of clarity.
Yep.
Um, the, on the collector's streets, like the major and minor, are we starting there at four and then building up? Cuz the top end of that uh, criteria is not a collector's street. So I just want to get clear, like are, is that meant to be the, the high, the top end of that criteria spectrum for street classification?
Maybe a better question to ask if I, if I could suggest this mayor is, you know, is there a desire to? Uh, maybe instead again of, of focusing on specific point numbers, is that we give less points for. Roadways across the board to uh, Council Member Black's point and Council Member Cruz's point. So that's not based on traffic as much as. Um, so we give fewer points and then uh, give a little bit more priority, maybe to arterials versus collectors. But not quite as wide of a swing as what's currently uh, proposed by staff.
Thank you. Counsel Low.
Sorry, I know you're trying to admirably land the plane here, mayor. I just, I, the, the more I think about this question, I mean, this is, this is just a flat out, just feels like a data evidence question. I mean, I think council wants to do whatever best practices. So if, if, if prioritizing sidewalks for arterials and collectors is gonna. Keep pedestrians safe and save lives, then we want to do that. If building, if prioritizing sidewalks on collectors and arterials. At, to Counsel Black's point, is actually gonna drive pedestrians into less safe areas, then we don't want to do that. So I, I, we, we got a lot of great, there, there's a lot of good presentation in the, I, clearly a lot of thought has gone into the prioritization index. But I just, I, I feel like ra- rather than us just casting, but I mean, the, the question is like. What is the data show? And I think council will overwhelmingly follow the data on this, I would suspect.
Mayor Pretum.
Yes, thank you. I, I think that there's like an ability to knit together the earlier presentation though, like when we looked at the. The fatalities from pedestrians, like these are on the major thorough, on the major arterial streets. Predominantly. And so for me, like when casting my vote and having a little bit more weight, like I constantly hear about. Kipling, for example, that doesn't have continuous sidewalks. So this is a place that often is that last mile for people to be able to use transit. Uh, so I do think that we do have some evidence already that's been presented to us tonight that's showcasing like, these are the areas that if we're looking at a. Vision zero process and a safe system that we know sort of where the majority of pedestrian fatalities are happening. So I'm, I mean, I am in favor of obviously being data informed, but we've been presented with a tremendous amount of data tonight.
Counsel Ryan.
But the problem I'm having is, you know, we're talking about schools as having, you know, three, four points and then nine for. Nine for this. I mean, it could just easily. Take away from all the other priorities. I mean, it'll just overwhelm, overwhelm everything. And, and I don't feel like I'm in a position to be able to say. Well, is four points the right number? Is five points the right number? And that's why I'm saying, I'm certainly willing to say, sure, you can. Change the emphasis and I like how you, the direction you're heading. Um, or giving you this suggestion that maybe nine's too high, but just come back to us with something that you think that makes sense. Um, rather than us trying to come up with whether it's four, four and a half, five, six.
Counsel Cruz.
Thanks. Yeah, and I definitely agree with the sentiment that like we should leave the points to you all to figure out. Um, to me, there's kind of two pieces here. Um, one is like, should the highest volume? Roadways be prioritized? I mean, I think just, I don't, this is something I don't agree with Counsel Sharazai about and that's okay. Like, we can have different. Ideas about what matters, right? Cuz data show us things, but data are not everything, right? Data show us where people are moving and where um, crashes are happening. It doesn't show us where people aren't walking where they should be in ways that could save. You know, the like vehicle miles traveled, so many things. Like, there, there's actually a lot of different ways to answer this question that we're never gonna. Slice perfectly. Um, so, so we can just have different opinions about that and that's okay. And there's not like an objectively best answer in my opinion. Um, so, so maybe that's just like a vote that I lose and that's fine, but I do think that that is one thing. Like, do we want to put the highest? Um, emphasis on the highest car volume roads for sidewalks. I think that that's a policy question that we're being asked. Then the second piece is if we are doing that, should it be as wide of a spread? And I, and it seems to me like the consensus on that is no. And I, and it seems to me like the consensus on that is no. Whatever that spread may be is not something I want to litigate. But I, I do think that those are two different questions that we're talking about right now.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Low.
I agree with both councillor Cruz and councillor Shirazai. I mean, the data, the data does show that there are fatalities on, on, on uh corridors and arterials. And so the, my, my only question is, is prioritizing the sidewalks on those arterials and those corridors going to reduce pedestrian fatalities? Uh so I get, in the spirit of trying to land the plane, my suggestion would be, I wonder if we agree with the, the prioritization for collectors and arterials with a flatter distribution. But on the condition that Public Works follow up with, with, you know, doesn't have to be another meeting or study session, but follow up with some data supporting, you know, with, with solid data from, pulled from other cities that shows that building sidewalks on collectors and arterials will in fact reduce pedestrian fatalities. And if, and if that is the case and there's convincing data in support of that, then, then we proceed with, with uh a point, a points that reward sidewalks on collectors and arterials.
Director Deandrea, the next step for this, would it not be that we would be um voting on this as an ordinance?
Not necessarily. So nothing was, I I believe was ever adopted formally. So the city received the information from LAC and it was just um tools essentially to help staff prioritize this. That doesn't mean we can't come back in some formal manner uh to, you know, adopt this in some fashion. I think we're just looking for a direction to, a- again, focus our limited resources in alignment with how you all would like to see us prioritize segments.
Okay, thank you. So then I, what I'm hearing is uh that we might have consensus around, yes, increasing the points. However, letting staff determine what those points are, narrowing that range of the points so that it is not up to nine. And then getting additional information down the road on, well, data behind which, which and where.
Yes, and that's, that's very doable.
Okay, thank you. That was my next question. All right, with that being said, can, does, um do we have consensus on that? Um on that idea. Okay, that would be yes. Thank you very much. Then we move on, I believe, to the Dr. Cog Equity Score.
Correct.
Do we have any council questions or conversation? Or are we ready for consensus vote on adding in the Dr. Cog Equity Score? Everybody ready? Okay, um if you would like to add in the Dr. Cog Equity Score, please thumbs up. If not, thumbs down. All right, that passes eleven yeses. And I do not recall what the next one is, but I think we have one more.
Yeah, I think this was, um you know, either reducing the distance. So those segments that are perhaps closer to activity centers. So we, we've been using, or the LA State criteria used a quarter of a mile or fifteen hundred feet quite a bit. If we wanted to reduce that at all, so that the closer you are to those activity centers, you, you may get some additional points for that or higher level of points. And and it could be parks as well, so not just activity centers, but anything so that the closer you are to something, the more points you get essentially.
Councillor Furman. Okay, there's eleven yeses. Um that was it, I believe, for the modifying the evaluation criteria. But we do also owe you something else. I have the word written comprehensive and I now have forgotten gotten what it was. What was the rest that you needed to vote on?
Nothing specific. I think, uh again, this is, it's good information to, you know, I think we, we could probably all agree that, you know, to move the needle, regardless of the priority. You know, it, it's um, it's very expensive. And so as we, you know, if we're gonna modi- maybe another point of question is to modify the design standards and our exaction requirements for development. Um because where it's going to take more than just the city building these, it's going to take our development community as well. Um so perhaps just getting uh feedback on that. And then, you know, continuing to evaluate alternate funding opportunities. So whether that's, um you know, some sort of bond or other means to finance new sidewalks to a greater degree. And perhaps that's a conversation for the future at your future retreat.
Thank you. Councillor Buren, then councillor Low.
I was just gonna say yes and yes. Yes and yes.
Okay, so we got some yeses, which I think the first yes of the two yeses is for um reevaluating developer standards um of our two yeses. Is that what you guys are talking about? Okay, so let's, um councillor Cruz, did you have a comment on that one or something else? Okay, councillor Cruz, you have the floor.
Yes, would love to in that conversation, maybe also talk about like, because I just think a lot, since there's so much development in War Two, there's just lots of teeny little sidewalks. And like, what would it look like to instead have a fee for them, the city to build a lot? I just want to think about connectivity more broadly. And so if we could have that as part of the discussion, I'm a resounding yes.
Okay, um director Deandrea, did you, would that be part of a discussion that would come to us at a later time? Or do we need to have that conversation now?
No, I think that's something, um yeah, I think we were specifically looking at, you know, looking at the standards and, and what we require of developers. But making that connectivity, again, kind of that thirty thousand level network uh concept is something we can certainly evaluate. And, you know, perhaps that becomes part of that pri- priority. So if, to your point, if there's four little segments that have been developed on a particular street, maybe we go in and, and fill the rest in somehow. And that becomes a higher priority for the city to do those little infill gaps.
But for tonight, all you need, I believe, is a thumbs up or a thumbs down on moving forward with that idea of reevaluating the development part of it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right, council, um please go ahead and, and cast your vote on that. And that passes eleven yeses. Um and then funding wouldn't be a conversation that we would have tonight. So I think that was it that you needed from us.
That is, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much and for your staff who is still on the call tonight, if we still have anybody. Um thank you for everything on that, you know. Sidewalks and streets aren't the sexiest thing and, and maybe not the most inspiring thing for many of us. But you know, as many of our councillors mentioned tonight, it really does profoundly impact our feeling of safety around our homes and our businesses and things like that. So um you guys are the amazing heroes behind the work, whether it be snow pounding in our streets or fixing row, you know, holes and sidewalks and all the things. And and I know that, you know, there's never enough gratitude for all that you do to keep us moving. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Um and with that, we'll go ahead and move on to committee reports. Do you have any committees that would like to report tonight? Mayor Pretam Shirazai.
Yes, thank you. And uh it's potentially very ambitious, but we do want to try and have one selection committee meeting this month. Uh we have an, I think with zoning, I'll, I will own this, I sort of forgot about selection. So we are going to revisit this. And there is a number of LAC folks that we would like to have some interviews with. Um we are down a member, but we still have quorum. And so we'll hold on some of the other um candidates and applications until the new year, when the new committee is established. So just flagging that for selection committee, folks, if we can make it work, we are attempting to do that.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, and with being no more, um we have no more further business. So I will go ahead and adjourn us um at ten thirty-five PM. Thank you, everybody. And again, thank you for your patience with me at the onset of our meeting tonight.